Welcome participants to the Joint Hybrid Meeting of the Planning Board of May 8. Call to order, Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Ms. Feliciel.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Ms. Olney.
Here.
Silber.
Here.
And Ms. Tenny.
Here.
Thanks. Looks like we have a quorum. I would like to remind all board members and guests, ask to be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak, and this meeting is being recorded. I have a quick statement to read ahead of the interviews. In the May issue, a layout editing error recalled resulted in the mass mislabeling of a campaign advertisement as a letter from the planning board. This letter should have been labeled as a paid advertisement. It is not a letter from the planning board, and the planning board does not endorse candidates. The Council on Aging, through the Friends of the Council on Aging, which funds the newsletter, privately is issuing a correction this week. Any continued discussion should be made to the town. Thank you. Now, to the business at hand of interviewing the MBTA task force at-large candidates. We drew numbers, and the process, correct me if I'm wrong, will be, each member will be given 10 minutes to speak.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes to speak. I'm not sticking around with that. Sorry. And then the planning board will ask, and the select board will ask questions. We've collected questions from everyone. There were 15 collected, but four have surfaced to the top of consistent questions, and if we have time, we'll continue on with other questions. So with that in mind, Sarah, can you give us the order of?
Yeah, I don't know who got number one.
Can I stay here? Do you want me to move?
Can I have a question, Ron? Do we have a charge for this task force, and can you tell me who exactly is already committed to it? I mean, I think we should have that information on what we're listening to the candidates.
Please, please.
Who has already been appointed to the task force and the groups? Like, which people have been, what their strengths are? So if we're thinking about people's strengths, what they're talking about them, what they are, where our gaps could be, and what are these people being asked to do? I haven't seen a charge or a mission statement, so I'm kind of wondering what they're being interviewed for. When you go for a job or interview, you know what the role should be? I haven't seen anything that describes what this role is. Could you describe that, please?
Right.
Sure. So, believing February, I sent the planning board an overview of what the select board requested for task force, those recommendations, and I gave the planning board a vote on that in February. And that subsequent to that, the various committees have made appointments representing the town. So the plans are ready, according to the person on the board, the conservation commission.
So who are those people? Who are those people?
I don't have that list in front of me, but I think.
The roles that that was.
No, there weren't.
I believe Betsy put that on the sharepoint. It should be there.
I have it open. I can read it. "The purpose is to assess whether the town should proceed with complying with Chapter 40A, 3A, a new law requiring multifamily housing by right near the town's commuter rail station concurrently and concurrently analyze the options for complying as well as not complying, along with the pros and cons for either path, and make recommendations." The composition is two planning board members, one select board member, one finance committee member, one downtown improvement committee member, one historic district member, one ZBA member, and two at-large members. An interim town member, town planner, Betsy Ware, is to lead the staff support. Sorry.
So my question was, the people that have been chosen from the boards?
I had the list from, that Debbie had sent us, Debbie's towns. So from the finance committee, it was Michael Pratt. From the ZBA, Sarah Melish. The two planning board reps were Chris Olney and Susan Philbrick. Historic District Commission, Robert Smith.
Richard.
I'm sorry, says Robert, Richard? Okay, Richard Smith, thank you. Downtown Improvement Plan Committee, Gar Morse. The select board, I believe, Anne, is yourself. I don't have the name for Concom. Debbie didn't have it at that time, so I don't know.
Thank you.
Greg, if you know who Concom's rep is.
I don't know what that is.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, can we have someone keep track of time as we go through this? Okay, so first person up is, introduce yourself.
Do you want me to stay here, if this is fine? Stay here?
Yeah.
Just stay here.
That's fine.
I'm Elizabeth Culbert at 22 C Street. In 2019, my husband and I were looking for a new home base, and once I came to Manchester, I knew I had found my forever town. I love Manchester's character and small-town charm. I love walking past the many historic homes to the stores and restaurants, and I find it amazing that there's still a town where young children can safely ride their bicycles unaccompanied by an adult. Whether you've lived in Manchester for five minutes or 50 years, you should be concerned about the potential impact of Section 3A in the zoning act. We need to ensure this by-right law does not become a developer's dream, as there currently is no affordable housing component and no special permitting process. Without proper implementation, more market rate units will be built, built thereby putting Manchester further behind in meeting proper affordable housing levels. I hope that the at-large members you appoint tonight will live within the half-mile radius of the train station, as a minimum of 40% of this multifamily zoning will exist there, which affects our zones G, V, D, and E, not just the general district. I have always been a civic-minded person. I volunteered so much in the Westboro school system that the principal offered me a job. I worked for Westboro's personnel board, drafting new bylaws, taking care of official postings and minutes, and worked with various department heads. I served on the Westboro MBTA Advisory Committee when a train station was reopening in town. We had to determine the best site for the station, reviewed traffic, environmental, and noise pollution studies, prepare articles for our town meeting, and create the town's mitigation wishlist. More recently, when I lived in Timidon, North Carolina, and served on the Grinnell's Beach Improvement Committee, which transformed a former gas station site into a beautiful waterfront park. This involved holding charrettes, working with department heads, fundraising, complying with grant guidelines, and executing the final design plan. I have a degree in economics accounting from Holy Cross and earned my CPA while working in Manhattan for Cooper's and Lybrand. There are many unanswered questions regarding this new zoning law. We still don't know the hard numbers of potential grant money lost versus cost to town services, schools, and roads. I am ready to put in the time and effort to investigate and tabulate what makes sense for Manchester. I may not be a long-term Manchester resident, but I am here for the long haul and care deeply for the future of our town. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the first, you have others to question. There are four that were generally shared among the members of these boards. The first of these is, will you be able to attend in-person meetings, public hearings, site visits, and site visits year-round? Are you a full-time resident of the town?
Yes, a full-time.
Do you have time to do these things? This is going, this is not an entry-level task force?
Right, yeah, I understand.
This is very serious business?
Yeah. When I was on the Westboro Task, the Advisory Committee, there was site plan, you know, we had to visit sites, many meetings, and I know it's a big commitment, and I am ready and willing to make that commitment.
Thank you.
In person.
Okay, the second question, which I think you've answered, but what key skills, experience, or knowledge do you have that you think will help the task force, and why are these important?
I think my CPA background, having an analytical brain, whenever there's any kind of financial decision, I've got my Excel spreadsheet. I'm always making spreadsheets, analyzing, and my experience working with, when Westboro had to determine where was the best site to reopen a train station, I was involved with that. And I'm just, I am a hard-working, I don't stop until something gets done.
What do you think the task force's biggest challenge will be in coming to a conclusion?
There's a lot of information to get through, and I think tabulating that information, first of all. And I know we have to figure out what is best for the town. We have, you know, compliance, non-compliance, but we have to look at all the data, and there's a lot of data to get there, which I don't think is, is, or not there yet. You know, what it will be the costs to our town services, our roads, our schools, if this multifamily housing becomes by-right, what's going to happen to our historic district? Because the three things that do actually concern me, looking through all this material, is there is something that says the Zone Act does not establish nor recognize site plan review as independent method of regulating land use. That to me is like, are they trying to say, we're not going to let you say you can use your regulations to control this multifamily zoning? That concerns me. There's another thing in there that says zoning will not be compliant if restrictions such as units must be combined with commercial or other uses, because I know in the original presentation that Sue Brown gave a year ago, she said, well, maybe because we were afraid of losing our Crosby and our downtown businesses, because we have these multifamily people coming in, where are they going to walk to if they don't have cars? Because we don't, you know, they don't have to have parking, I think, in these new multifamily units. So if we lose our businesses, there's nowhere for them to shop. So one of the pieces in there says you can't say that it has to have a commercial component, unless everything in that area has to, it has to all be uniform zoning. So that concerns me. And then the historic component, because one thing I loved when I came here was, I loved the mixture of the historic and the new, and I don't want to see our historic towns, historic sites and homes be taken down because a developer has the right to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have enough time. Okay. So the task force will have representatives from various town boards committees. How do you envision your role as an at-large member, and how do you structure, how would you structure this task force?
Well, there's definitely got to be a chairperson who gives us some direction, and I'm thinking that maybe somebody's more in charge of financial, coming up the different pieces of the puzzle, and then, you know, the chairperson would have to coordinate and, you know, obviously listen to, we'd have to have meetings with town residents to see what do people in town really want. And just, you know, do your research, do your homework, and be a good listener.
Thank you. We want to continue with questions, shall we have time?
Why don't we do everybody, and then if we have time, to come back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Go to number two.
I think that's Lorraine. Is she here?
Lorraine, I am about to use number two. Is she here, Lorraine?
Let's.
Let's move to number three for now, and come back. Who's number three? What do you think?
My name's Tim McDonald. I'm an architect. My family and I moved here two years ago, moved into my wife's house that she grew up in, in Manchester, just up on Spyrock Hill. My company in Philadelphia and Manchester is a development design build company, and we focus primarily on affordable and market rate housing, but more specifically on high-performance, net-zero energy, carbon-neutral buildings. So when I heard about the task force, I thought that if my skills around understanding how housing gets developed, how climate change affects the development of any kind of housing in a place like Manchester could be used in any way, then I'd love to offer that to the community, because my kids love living here and being educated here, and we plan to be here for a very long time. The focus of our work is really about the fact that buildings are responsible for almost 50% of all carbon in the environment, and so if we think we're going to address climate change, we have to do it with buildings, we have to do it with communities. And so I don't have a particular perspective on whether the town should or shouldn't take on the 40A, Section 3A requirements. I think what's most important is to understand what the impacts of that would be from a zoning change, and I think it's pretty significant. But I also think to really understand what the financial impacts are, not just from the state kind of removing the ability from Manchester to get critical infrastructure grants and housing financing. Aside from that, I think there are much larger issues that I think Betsy has approached in her letters over the past couple of months, which is, this is a much larger question about climate change and how it affects this community. And so some of the issues around 40A, Section 3A, go completely against what we know is going to happen unless there are significant changes to the community as it relates to climate change and sea level rise and so forth. For instance, building in and around the train station, as Betsy said, train station will probably be underwater by 2070, and so I would love to offer whatever help that I can in that effort, if it makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, first question again. Will you be able to attend in-person meetings, in particular in your case, given that you have a business which is elsewhere?
Yeah, yes, I'm working remotely, so I have, I'm working from my home, which is within the half-mile radius of the MBTA. So yes, I have lots of time.
What key skills or experiences or knowledge do you have that you think will help the task force, and why are these important?
So every community that I've lived in, I've been a part of the community organization in some way. I spent 10 years on the zoning committee in my last community organization, as well as in urban design committee, so I do have that experience of working with a diverse group of people and boards and organizations. And specifically, in that community, our population doubled within 10 years, and so there was massive development, and there was a lot of pushback from the community, and I was a part of that. And I'd like to think that our zoning and urban design committee really focused the development that did happen in a really good and sustainable direction. So that's one piece. The other piece is that because I'm an architect, a developer, and a builder, I understand, I've worn all those hats, and I understand what the, what the issues are around that, but more specifically, as it relates to climate change issues like storm order management, sea level rise, resilient architecture, it's where my focus has been for the past 25 years.
Thank you.
Sure. The task force will have representatives from various town boards and committees. How do you envision your role as an at-large member? I'm not sure it says, and how would you structure the task force, but it does.
Yeah. I wasn't expecting to structure the task force. I was really expecting to be a part of it and really just offering my perspective from my experience, which is, we're pretty well-known, we've won lots of national and international awards around building resilient, high-performance, carbon-neutral buildings, and I think that that might be really helpful for this task force, because the future that we're talking about is beyond the next two years. It's about the next 100 years. So I think, for the most part, that's where I could be really helpful.
Thank you.
What do you think the task force's biggest challenge would be in, at a recommendation, and arriving at a recommendation?
Yeah. I guess there are two. The first is really coming to terms with the, I've read through the housing production plan, I've read through the municipal vulnerability plan, I've read through the FEMA mitigation plan, and the master plan. And I think what's clear in all of those plans, that you all have done such amazing work on in the past 10 years, is that there are some themes that come out of that. One is, we need more affordable, when I say affordable, it's in quotes, we need more affordable housing in this, in this community. The question is, how do you do it? We have real infrastructure problems in this community. The FEMA report is incredibly detailed about all of the specific issues that need to be addressed, and they're the high-level issues, as far as I'm concerned. It has to do with the sewage treatment plant, it has to do with downtown and the train station. So one of the biggest challenges is, how do you even think about housing in the 100-year flood zone? That is, that's a real challenge, and whether it's a, whether it's a good idea or not. And if it is a good idea, what are some of the ways that that can make sense? And the FEMA report has lots of ideas for that. But I think the second challenge is really going to be about how you communicate that to a community, whatever gets decided, because I don't have a, I don't, I don't have a position about which way to go, but how you communicate that to the community, that's going to be the biggest challenge.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So I think that's, should we go on to number four?
Yeah.
Holding number four.
I'm number four.
Okay, number four.
I'm Sandy Bonham Turner. I've lived in town for 24 years. I have law, I have degrees and whatnot in planning, and I have done both on the developer side and the government official side work in the whole land use planning area. And frankly, I am retired, and so your, the answer to your first question, Anne, is yes. And I did not expect to be involved at all, but there seemed to be a lot of hullabaloo about what this was all about. And I was very concerned, as a resident, just as a plain old citizen, that in fact there was some mandate that was rigid and irrational and going to destroy the town. And of course, that's not anything, I mean, for the first two speakers, we're all here for the same reason, which is that we really love the town, and your comment about kids riding on bikes is a great comment. It's wonderful to see, actually. Hard traffic problem. And so I thought, well, okay, so I know about all this stuff. I have done it before. I also have an environmental background. I was an air pollution fellow, supported by EPA when I went to graduate school in Connecticut. And so I thought, well, okay, let's see if we can get out these tools and be helpful. Is there really something to be alarmed about? And I did spend some time reading the guidelines. And the guidelines, I have read the master plan, and the thing that was encouraging to me and made me feel like, okay, there's something positive that can come out of this if it is properly managed, is that the guidelines, to a great degree, align with the goals in the master plan and the goals that the town has set for itself. And those goals were established after a long time of public commentary. And there are things like, you, I think you mentioned those of affordability. So it's really up to your town to decide if they want to put that into regulations. It's not ordered by the state, but it's up to the town to decide that. Anyway, so I'm here offering those things because I think it might be useful. I think, anyway.
Okay, your time.
Time's up, okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
So I think.
But I eliminated the first question.
Yeah. So, and you want to try now too?
Yeah, what skills, experience, or knowledge do you have that will help the task force? You've touched on this, but.
Well, there are subject matter skills in terms of environmental regulation, yeah. But I think probably more, more important than those, so I'm, so I can sit down and look at a set of guidelines and begin to read through and quickly go and get some assessment about, is there some flexibility here on the part of the state, which there appears to be? Is this an opening shot at a negotiation, et cetera? But I think frankly, the most important skill is working with groups of people to try and come to resolution, to listen, to hear the different points of view, and to put together a solution that's a workable solution. So, you know, both environmental skills and land use planning skills, but also really, things don't need to be this contentious.
Thank you.
Okay. The task force will have representatives from various town boards and committees. How do you envision your role as an at-large member, and how would you structure the task force?
I don't know that I'll take on answering structuring the task force. I think it's good that the task force exists, because it is across all, I mean, it is astonishing to me how much gets done in the town by volunteers, by people who really give their time, who have a lot of skill, and make things happen. But, so I think the idea of a task force of bringing people from all the, getting people out of their silos to make a good solution for the whole town is important. But I guess I would see my role as doing three things. To the extent Betsy needs help, actually really helping with some of the research and gathering data, so we understand what the facts that came from. The second thing, and this is something also another thread in my career, is presenting ideas that are really new and complicated sometimes with clarity, so they can be understood. And that's a big challenge with zoning regulation, a big challenge with the law in general. And the third thing, and probably it's the most important, is to just, as an at-large member, is to listen, is to be part of making forums and community events happen, so that we really hear what people think when they are presented with the facts.
Thank you.
And the last question is, what's the task force's biggest challenge in coming to a recommendation?
I think the biggest challenge, well, I would say, actually, there are two. One is assembling facts, I mean, looking at how many acres are in the G district or the other districts, have, you know, what is the situation, defining that in a clear, comprehensible way. But the biggest challenge is communicating clearly about what, and simply about what the options are, so people can understand and really make, so the citizens of the town can make decisions for themselves.
Thank you.
Okay, is that, is that?
That's, that's our four regular questions.
Number five.
Number five. I'm Rosemary Costello. I live on Bennett Street with my husband and college-age son. I've lived there for five years. I came from Beverly, where I lived for 17 years. I came here so that my son could go to high school at Manchester. And I joined the Historic District Commission in the fall of 2018, soon after we moved here, and now I am the chair of the Historic District Commission. I live in the Historic District, and that is within the half-mile radius of the train. I'm also currently on the Coastal Vulnerability Action Plan Steering Committee, and I have a background in historic preservation planning. I have a master's degree in historic preservation planning. I had worked for DHCD giving out large cardboard checks in my most recent employment with the Community Development Action Grant Program. Manchester received one of those checks in 2003, I think, to do the sewer upgrades at Crosby's. I am interested in participating in this task force despite having a representative from the Historic District Commission, because I think that there's a lot of challenges. The two that I think are the top ones are the timeline. Something has to be presented to the state in the next 17 months. This is a mandate. The attorney general has said, you don't have a choice, you have to do this, or we're going to sue you. So something has to be done. It can't be that we decide to opt out of grants. It can't be that we decide to opt out of grants. We have to come up with a response. And thirdly, there's really an interest, I think, across the community in housing on a number of topics, senior housing, accessory dwelling units, a variety of housing types to address affordability and different families or not families who want to live here. So, I think a challenge that is both part of the timeline and the mandate is to try to both address the mandate and address the interests that are beyond mandate. Is it possible to incorporate those two things? And is there time to do it well? I'd like to be solution-oriented. I don't want to fight till windmills. I want to get to a solution.
Thanks. Questions? Will you be able to attend in-person meetings, public hearings, site visits year-round?
Yes.
You're not a part-time resident.
What key skills, experiences, or knowledge do you think will contribute?
I think some basic skills are participating in these kind of task forces and committees. I think I am both a leader and a listener. I know when debate has to be cut off and when it is time to incorporate more debate. I think I've read through the guidelines that the states put out, and I've read through the town zoning bylaw, and I can see where there are opportunities to use a lot of our existing zoning to cover some of the mandate without having to explode construction or explode opportunities for construction. I think I'm familiar with how DHCT works, so I'm happy to have conversations with state and federal officials about zoning and housing and preservation, so I'm comfortable in that. Thank you.
The task force will have representatives from various town boards and committees. How do you envision your role as an at-large member? And how would you structure the task force?
I have actually, sitting here, thought about the structure of the task force. I think there are probably opportunities for some committees to do some focused work and research so that it isn't all a public forum and discussion. I think there does need to be work with a consultant. And so, there may be more than one type of consultant that needs to chime in and have representatives of the task force work with those consultants to get that information. And I'm sorry, I forgot the first part of the question.
How do you envision your role?
Yeah, so I wouldn't be a representative of the Historic District Commission. I would just be a representative, I think, of the area within the downtown as a resident within the half-mile radius. I think that's my perspective.
And what do you think would be the biggest challenge in coming to a recommendation?
I think it's the timeline. I think it's a lot to happen in the next 17 months.
Okay, are we up to number five?
That was five.
Number six.
Jim on...
Jim Dietrich. You're on. Two minutes.
Just unmuted myself, thank you. I've lived in Manchester since 2008, and since I've been here, I've been active on a number of boards and activities. One of the things that I took some responsibility for was getting Verizon to improve their cellular service in town. Prior to my moving here, cellular service was almost non-existent. And working with the Select Board and a couple of other people who had some experience with digital electronics, we were able to come to a solution that nets the town, I believe, about $35,000 a year so we can rent space on our water tank. That took a little doing. I've served on the zoning board of appeals, either as a member or as an alternate member, and I've lived through the 40B process. The one thing I have learned in my life and in serving on boards is to listen and not speak as much. We have some serious problems here in this town. It's a lovely place to live, and I cannot imagine living anywhere else at the moment, but we do have issues. We don't have enough housing. We cannot house even people who are engaged in working for the town. We have environmental issues, as one of the gentlemen said. The railroad and parts of the area are under harbor will likely be underwater unless some mitigating effects are made. And we don't know what they are because there hasn't been a lot of work in that area. My strength, I've trained as an engineer. I've worked in high-tech all my life, either for a large multinational corporation or running my own consulting business. One of the more difficult things I've found in serving on committees is trying to get people together and build consensus. In zoning, we have had some sticky wickets, to say the least. The good news is we've been able to bring applicants and butters together with the regulations to end up getting positive effect, a win-win, if you will, rather than a win-lose. Frankly, I was surprised that I would be speaking tonight. I thought there would be a few questions I would be answered, answering, excuse me. So, I didn't really come prepared. I'm happy to take any of your questions now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Well, they're pretty much the same questions we've been asking. Will you be able to attend in-person meetings, public hearings, site visit? Are you a part-time resident? Please clarify how you'll make the commitment.
Well, I think it's obvious. I've served on the zoning board for about 10 years, and I've gone to site visits in the snow and the rain, and I've gone to all the meetings. I don't know that I've missed many meetings unless I've been on holiday. I live in town. I live about three-quarters of a mile from the railroad station on Pine Street.
What specific skills and experience and knowledge do you have that you think will help the task force?
That's a very good question. I think my training over the years in working with complicated and complex issues has helped me a great deal. I'm also a very good listener. I tend to listen a lot. I don't always ask too many questions, but I listen. And in some of the meetings I've been to in town, I think listening is obviously very important. So, I don't have any special skills. Some of the people who've previously spoken have wonderful skills in this area, and they've been involved in many complex things. My skill is a listener, being a resident, and being able to look at complicated subjects and get to the bottom line and understand them. Thank you.
So, how do you envision your role as an at-large member? And how would you structure the task force?
That's a question I was not prepared to answer. In fact, I am frankly surprised that none of this was sent out to the people who put their name in the hat. I have no idea how to structure this task force. Obviously, we'll probably need some subcommittees. We've done that in zoning. We're going to need some consultants. We found that out very quickly in the 40B process. The consultants were able to help us agree. I don't see what my role would be other than to listen, to learn, because right now, there are a lot of comments flying around about this subject, but not a lot of information, so far as I know. So, I threw my hat in the ring because I thought, one, you asked for help, and two, because I think it's important, and three, because these are things that have to get done.
Thank you. And what do you think would be the biggest challenge in coming to a recommendation?
Building consensus. We, there's a lot at stake here, if I understand correctly from reading what Betsy has put out. There's a significant amount of public money that will be or will not be available to the town depending on what we determine. I don't know what effect that would have, but certainly, it would have an effect. That's important. We also have to find ways for our residents to come together and accept things maybe that would not be their ideal, but that for the best interest of the town, to grow and prosper. So, consensus building, to me, is really important. This cannot be an adversarial relationship between the members of the committee and the committee and the town. We have to learn how to get it done, one way or the other, and work together. When we were faced with this 40B issue, which is still ongoing, as you know, initially, there were a lot of issues that we did not really understand. As we talked to the developer and we talked to the consultants, we learned a great deal. We learned what was doable and what was not doable. And we learned that just because someone wanted to do something new and different did not mean it was not a good idea. This is what the committee is going to be faced with, is sorting through all of this information and making reasonable, logical, and correct decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Number seven.
I'm Jenny Hall, 20 Massacrean Market Street, Manchester. I've lived in town probably one, twenty-four years, you know, 43 years. And obviously, have a stake in the town and a child that lives here with his family. I think what I bring is a general skill set in the real estate, investment, development, management disciplines. I am a principal in a company known as Halkin Management. We manage 7,000 units of affordable housing and, as well as some assisted living. And my job, such as it is, is I'm on the board, and I basically help to oversee the day-to-day operations of that company. We have a particular focus on affordable housing. And I would say parenthetically, I would hope that whatever we decide, we do have, but the town insists on having some affordable component in this exercise. I guess the biggest challenge, I think, we face is how to site and where to site the units that would get constructed under this 40A, 3A. As an example, if we put something in close to the train station, you're probably going to have to build it on a podium, which means that now you've got three-story garden apartments on a podium. So, how many feet is that up in the air? And what does that begin to do to the character of the town? So, I worry about where we would site these units within a half-mile of the train station and what we're going to end up having to deal with in terms of height restrictions, which, as I understand it, we won't have any control over. So, I think that's a particular challenge. Financing of the, I have a background in real estate finance as well. Even without affordable housing component, financing these properties are going to be exceedingly difficult, even if it's market rate, if it's rental. If it's condominiums, not so much. But you have to worry about what the composition of these units will be. If they're all high-end condominiums, you really haven't solved your affordability problem. In fact, you've exacerbated it because a developer will come in and find a one-acre parcel, which he, in today's world, he'd pay with a house on it, $800,000 or so. If he can put 15 units on that one acre, which he can, you're going to have people crawling over themselves to come into Manchester to develop. And so, it really is going to be critical to understand what the economic implications are and the financial implications. So, I have that experience and that expertise.
Okay.
Okay. First question, as you probably have heard, is, are you, do you have time to attend lots of meetings, lots of forums, site visits, and so on, year-round?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was easy. What key skills, experiences, or knowledge do you have that you think will help the task force? And why are these important?
I think I really...
Yeah.
I already hit that one.
How do you envision your role as an at-large member? And do you have any thoughts about structuring the task force?
I think some of the ideas about subcommittees makes a lot of sense because there's just a tremendous amount of stuff that needs to get done. I think where I can help in particular is understanding some of the financing implications.
I'm going to push on that one just a little bit. We've talked about financial implications in terms of schools and public safety. Are you talking about costs to the town or the cost of building?
I think it's both. The building cost, today, just to build a single, or a multifamily property of any size, say 50 to 100 units, the average cost is going to be about $350,000 a unit. And you work backwards. That still means that a tenant is going to be paying a pretty hefty rent. So, in part because I've been involved in the affordable housing business for a long time, trying to get supplementary soft debt, things like that, from mass housing, the private housing, community development, may well be very important. And we do have some experience in that regard.
Okay, and what do you think the task force's biggest challenge will be in arriving at a recommendation?
I think the biggest challenge is going to figure out where to cite the units that we end up getting to.
It's a zoning change, it's not really...
I'm sorry?
We're just changing the zoning, but, you know, we're not developing here.
That's true.
That's true.
I guess, thinking it through, I think the biggest challenge will be to achieve some measure of consensus. Obviously, the last couple of years have been very divisive. And, you know, it really troubles me to see, when I go to a town meeting, where somebody gets up and essentially impunes the integrity of people like you guys who serve for no compensation. And if there is a way to tamp that down and come to a solution where people can actually get behind it, I think is going to be important.
Okay, thank you. Number eight, Mr. Russell.
Gary Russell, 9 Magnolia Avenue. I have over 20 years of experience in architecture, planning, community engagement. Many of you know me from my work here in Manchester on the Concom and co-chairing the Master Plan Committee, as well as some service on the Planning Board. I think this is a really important issue because of its complexity of a variety of topics that interact. And I think my experience... And I think my experience with the master plan is exactly that. Myself and committee members spent many years with lots of meetings and time, engaging with different facets of the public to hit all stakeholders as much as we could because it's not just one topic, but it's, it's all issues that intertwine when you're talking about zoning and development. So that's a complex web of information you have to sort through. I'm going to go ahead and skip to the questions.
Just a moment. Is there a problem, the zone says we're signed out? I'm still going to go to scene 23.
No problem, I can hear everybody and see everybody. This is Gail.
Now you're done.
Excuse me. I also got a text from Brian Solacey. He was boarding a plane. He was going to try to reconnect through plane wifi. I'm not sure if he was able to do that, so I just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you very much. Sorry, Gary.
No, it's okay, it's fine. You made me lose my place. I'll just answer the questions because I think those are really important. I live in town, I've lived here for 10 years. I live here full-time. I work from home, I own my own business, and I can't attend meetings in person. I dropped out of service for a while because of some pressures and some health issues, but I'm walking and back amongst the living now, so ready to re-engage. Special skills, well, I think probably one of the most notable skills I have is I have deep experience in historic preservation, so we should talk later. In my work with Boston Landmarks Commission as staff architect, I've actually written these types of design guidelines for a number of different landmarks and districts. I understand that when you're looking at preserving the character of a community, and especially when it involves government mandates, so it means that, you know, there are frameworks that you have to fit within. And it can be a delicate dance about how to come up with guidelines that protect the community and protect the needs of a neighborhood while still allowing development to move forward because we also need development to serve our community's needs. So I've, I've done that work and I think I can be of great help there. In terms of the task force, I agree, I'm not going to tell you how I would organize it, but I will tell you how I would contribute as an at-large community, a community member. And that is through the master plan process, you know, I spend a lot of time with people from, from all over town with a variety of concerns. And I think that we did really good work when we came up with the master plan and identifying the priorities of different stakeholders in different areas around different topics. And that's the kind of work that I think that I can really help the task force do, is looking at engagement. And a side note, I do think it's important that in the case that Chris Olney might not get re-elected to the planning board, I am a certified professional planner, and I think that's a voice that would work well to serve the task force. And the biggest challenge, there are a lot of them. I agree with everything that people have said. Building consensus will be difficult. And I think one of the keys to that will be as the task force gets through towards the latter part of their work, you do need data, but you need relevant data. So you need to find out what data actually can be implemented in a meaningful way. And, and some of that is difficult to come by. And I think one of the keys is that in zoning scenarios, these are make-believe scenarios. This is a mandate by the state to allow development, but it doesn't mandate it. It doesn't bring it, we're not going to build it. So it's difficult to present development scenarios, impact studies, that are meaningful with make-believe data. So that's a particular challenge, I think, that this task force needs to take on.
Okay, thank you, looks like you've answered the questions. Is Lorraine Iavoni come on? I have a chance, I see an iPhone.
There is a chat, there are two messages in the chat, I wouldn't know if anyone looked at those?
Chat. Chat. Can chat, can the charter members be posted to the chat forum? What budget will the task force have to perform? Budget? No, no message.
You want to, like, may, I, I, some, some of the answers, it sounds like maybe some folks don't know that there is a process already in place hiring a consultant for data.
Yes, we have, we're working on that.
Do we have time tomorrow?
Yeah, I think we do, I think we have about 15 minutes or so, 20 minutes.
So everyone?
I think, you know, instead of going through these, maybe if
So if everyone has these.
If they want it, somebody wants to ask a question of someone or all, I think I'll throw it up, we'll throw it open to the group.
May I start at my end, besides Kathy? Do you have?
Sure.
For individuals or?
Just, I'd like to ask each individual to answer the following question. Do you have any conflicts of interest? Who'd like to go first?
So I mean, I guess, does everyone here know what that means, honestly? I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay, well, I mean, conflicts of interest, when you sign up for a town committee, you are beholden to make decisions in the best interest of the town. And if you're a personal property owner, sometimes you have to make decisions that are in the best interest of the town that may not be in your personal best interest, of your property, et cetera. That's one example of a conflict of interest. Another example of a conflict of interest is if you, you know, happen to have a developer friend who wanted to come in here and do some development and, and you were on the task force to try and, you know, help the zoning change to achieve your friend's goals. Those are two examples of conflict of interest.
Another question.
Yes.
If you live within the half-mile of the train station, does that represent a conflict?
Could, yeah, it could. Because, I mean, it's a small town, right? Most people, a lot of people live within, it's not, it's not a disqualifying factor.
Potentially, the zones could go outside the district, so that would be everybody.
Yeah, so, let me clarify, because Danny asked a clarifying question, which is a good question. It's a potential conflict of interest, but as long as somebody recognizes that and agrees to make the decision based on the best interest of the town, I, I wholeheartedly expect that the at-large members are going to live within the half-mile or slightly outside because it's just, it's a small town. Okay, I'm sorry, who'd like to go first, Rosemary?
I, yes, I've already said I live within the half-mile and I recognize that could be a potential conflict, but I am not planning to develop my property into multifamily housing. And I do not own any other property that I could potentially develop into multifamily housing within the community.
Want to just go around?
Sure.
I, same, I don't intend to develop our property into a multifamily housing.
Let me clarify, it's to prevent any changes so that someone doesn't build multifamily housing near you. That's also a potential.
Yeah, I have, I think, no.
I have no conflicts and were to be approached by someone as a consultant that owned a property in the area, I would turn down the job or I would resign from the task force.
No, other than being a property owner in the town?
I have, no.
Jim Dietrich.
I've been a member of the zoning board now for quite a few years. I've taken the ethics training, I believe it's every two years, and have a certificate. So I have a pretty good understanding of how we should behave. Thank you.
Christina.
My question was pretty technical, so I thought these would maybe be distributed to people ahead of time so you would have some time to do some homework on it. But my question was, what's your understanding of what home rule means? And how do you conflate the definition of home rule, in your opinion, with the state mandate? Home rule, does anyone need a little primer on it?
I have a loose understanding of home rule. I feel like the state mandate is a little bit of a large stick in this instance and exerting more control than home rule. It's overreaching home rule, superseding home rule in our 180 communities that are being affected or whatever it is. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
You know, the, the state mandate, it's going to be interesting to see whether somebody litigates this because I think it represents an overreach. Home rule is, as, as you heard, is something that pertains to something that the town themselves, I think, mandate. Whether the state, I think, I think it's a, you know, candidly, I think it's a 40A, 3A is a, not an ideal solution for the town, but as long as the state attorney general's opinion applies, we have to make the best of the bad situation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, all I would say is that I've read through the action plans of all of the communities and Manchester's got one of the most challenging situations just because of how small it is. There are so many other communities that have a lot more housing that is built up around their, their train stations, their transportation. And so the only thing that I would say is that I think the mandate is maybe more challenging for this community than it is for a lot of surrounding communities.
I'll just add, I, I agree to that. I think that the mandate is challenging and in large part because we don't really know what that is yet. We're at the very early stages of a new administration. It's already signaled changes in attitude. We don't know what other specific changes may come along. But it's something that I think should always be on the table within the task force, all options. Like any, any good study, you know, starts with do nothing, we're saying no. We need to understand that. But we first need to know, you know, what the consequences are. They've said it's a mandate, but we don't exactly know what that means.
Well, they said they'd litigate, is what they said.
Yeah.
You do nothing.
Yeah, but what does, what, what does that actually mean to the town? You know, they
Let's, let's go, just Sandy.
I understand that's what the state has said, but I also, reading 3A, there seems to me, anyway, but this is in the absence of hard data about exactly how many units exist and all that. It seems to me we may be pretty close to compliance as it is because there's no requirement, as Ron said, to build anything. There's simply a requirement to look at the zoning regs. And in fact, the zoning regs in the G District allow three-family housing. So I'm not ready to get into a fight because it's expensive to do litigation, but I think the first step is to figure out what the situation really is, you know, and, and then see.
Please.
I mean, as far as home rule, do I think the state is stepping on our toes a little bit by trying to take, you know, possession of our zoning? Yeah, I do. That said, I do think we need to investigate everything and fully investigate all our options.
Jim Dietrich.
Thank you. Mandates have already worked, particularly in the last few years. States typically do right regulations that cover towns because towns, in many cases, fail to do the right thing. The right thing may be the right thing for the town, but it may not be the right thing for the overall community. We have to balance this. The 40B that we just went through is a classic example of that. If our town had acted over the years to have more housing, we probably, we would not be faced with the situation we are now of being in court on a 40B. Doing the right thing is not always easy. And as someone said when they were mentioning ethics, it affects all of us. We may feel that, oh, we need to do a certain thing, but it's going to affect us personally or vice versa. So I tend to take a fairly quiet view of mandates. They generally get worked out. And I don't think, I don't think we want to get into a situation of discussing mandates and versus home rule when right now it has been decided that we will have to take some steps. Those are the most important things we have to deal with, not to discuss mandates or home rule. Thank you.
So in the essence of time, I'd like to get everyone to ask questions. So I hope you guys can keep your remarks brief so we can move along. Mary?
My question might not be simple. So I, there is a lot of misinformation out there and, you know, I even heard it in here tonight that we almost comply and things, people are blowing things out of proportion. You know, with a strong communication needing to happen and get the facts out, you know, today, I guess I'm, I'm curious if, if each of you feel like we already are close to compliance. We haven't cited any of this, so I'm curious how people are, are thinking if we're close to compliance or not.
No. We're not close to compliance.
Let's go, let's go around.
Well, we don't have a zoning district that is, we have not enacted a zoning general or any other district that allows multifamilies. That is not in compliance. We have, I think, in the general district, an opportunity to tweak existing zoning language to perhaps bring us closer to compliance, but I don't think we are technically in compliance now.
Danny?
I, I don't think we're close to compliance in terms of the number of units that stipulated, which is 555. I don't think we're close to that.
Yeah, I mean, all the, everything that I've read, again, through all of these reports over the past 10 years, it's what the town wants to do, but we're definitely not there as it relates to. Now, we've got, part of, part of the downtown district has, you know, 15 units per acre, 30 units per acre, even higher than that. So there are, there are densities that exist here naturally, but we're far from complying with the mandate.
Mr. Russell.
Yeah, I agree with that. We're not in compliance and we're not that close, or we wouldn't be here. But there is precedent for what compliance could look like in town. And I think that's a really important start.
Sandy.
I have no idea if the town is in compliance because the data's not in. And I don't really understand how people can say one way or the other. I mean, there's certainly parts of town that are iconic, you know, like Peel House Square, which probably exceeds the, the requirement. So the question is to take a thorough, careful look and figure out whether we are or not and kind of, everybody keep a cool head and let's see what the situation is. Because it doesn't help for everyone to get all hot and bothered. You need to understand what the situation is.
Please.
Since 40% have to be within the half-mile of the train station and you have, each parcel has to be at least five contiguous acres, I would say we're nowhere near in compliance.
Jim Dietrich. James.
Somebody else is on there. I have no idea, I don't believe we're in compliance now, based on my information. We're probably, will approach compliance when Elm Street, the Elm Street gets fully done. And once the 40B is adjudicated, we may be in compliance. So right now, we're, we're sort of in a, a very gray area.
Do you want to skip us?
I, yeah, I have no questions.
So we'll go to Sarah.
So, let's pretend that we are at the finish line at a town meeting and whatever compliance looks like has failed, but we have put forward a Plan B that has some good things besides affordable housing, which we've all talked about. What's one, you know, short thing that could come, that's good, that this process could result in one good zoning change or zoning opportunity that you envision could come from this?
Well, I'm just going to riff off of your master plan and the housing production plan because there were tons of good ideas in there. And I think, I think in general, the mandate is in the master plan at some, at some level. It's about TOD, transit-oriented development. It's about smaller units. It's about making more affordable housing in this community. So, I think if we don't meet the mandate, but we generate the opportunity for more housing that's affordable for people who work here, that's a great, that's a great thing.
I said not affordable housing. That's okay, Gary.
Okay, I'll ignore the affordable housing part.
Oh, should I, I must say, when I say the word affordable housing, I don't know what that means, other than it doesn't mean subsidized in my head. It means below market rate, which means smaller units that are less expensive to rent. Sorry.
Totally fine. Yeah, it's, it's kind of a weird planner speak, architect speak thing, affordable big A, small A.
Right.
We've been trying to shift towards attainable housing to look at market rate availability. There's no really good word to capture that missing piece. Anyway, that's it, that's something else. But in terms of a specific zoning proposal that might come out of this that isn't specifically the housing piece is, I think, that we could have zoning that allows a variety of building types that would not only not harm the character of town, but could actually enhance the character of town. Much of what we see in town today is not an authentic New England small town that we started as, but in fact, we have pockets of town that have been diminished in character because of various influences, whether they were economic or whether they were the mid-century zoning that was plopped down on top of our town, which is frankly why 75% of our properties are non-conforming. I happen to think it's not the properties that are non-conforming, but it's the zoning that's non-conforming.
Sandy.
I mean, I would second what both Jim and Gary have said. I think if in fact some clarity and specificity can come to the goal that I think everybody in this room agrees with, which is to preserve the character of the village, which is unique and quite special. If there's specific things in terms of what that means in terms of zoning, that would be a very worthwhile end.
Thanks. Liz.
Really, I mean, just diverse housing. I have three millennial children and they're always telling me how they don't want to live in single-family housing, but they want to be able to live, they'd like to live in a place like Manchester, but they can't afford it, or they don't want a single-family house, so more diverse housing. Just a good look at our zoning bylaws.
Debbie.
I think there needs to be more, if we can come out of that with a more flexible zoning bylaw, that among other things would allow for accessory dwelling units, which is probably the quickest and the most effective and probably most cost-effective way to increase the number of units in town, almost immediately.
I think personally, I would like to see a demolition delay ordinance implemented somewhere. And also, I would think the process might identify beyond the 40% in the half-mile radius, what's a real district outside that area? Where is another district that could sustain multi-family housing of any scale?
Jim Dietrich. Sorry.
Thank you. I've often wondered if a couple hundred years ago, when this town was starting to grow, if the same discussions were being held in about destroying the nature of what exists and fear of what it may become. This town is not the town that I remembered 45 years ago when I first started to come here because my wife's grandparents lived here and her aunt, and we would come here in the summertime, visit friends. The town's changed a lot and it's going to continue to change. And it's been well documented that one of the big impediments to afford, to housing, sufficient housing in our country, let alone our town, is zoning regulations that gets in the way of achieving that. And we've tried on the zoning board, working with a planning board, to modify the zoning bylaw on at least two occasions, and it's been shot down at town meeting because of lack of understanding and fear. And fear is a big issue. And one of the challenges that this committee will have to face is overcoming that fear.
Okay. Maybe we get some yes, no, any questions? John round?
All right, well, let me break this in the form of an F, yes, no. I'm going to go back to affordable housing. This whole, all of the information that the state has put out has been a little bit murky in terms of, are you going to accept what we've got in terms of our zoning as it stands with regard to three-family houses? And if you do the math, we need like 575 houses or, or 575 areas that are zoned, lots that are zoned for that, that can have those units. We've got a lot of those units that are in place, especially in the general district here. They've said they're also open to affordable housing components. And we all know that affordable housing and housing policy is really high on the state's to-do list. Soon as you put in an affordable housing component, you make that a little bit more difficult for developers to say, I can do this. Do you want for our application to have an affordable housing component in it? And I think there's a two-step application. We have to put in something at the end of this year, correct? And then they take a look at it and say, eh, maybe some of it's okay, maybe not, and they'll come back with some recommendations. Is that the way it's going to go? Or is it just one shot?
No, I think you have to do it at least 90 days before, if you want to comment before you go to town.
All right. So, that notwithstanding, would you put affordable housing as a component?
I think they're saying it's only 10% that they, so, yes.
Is this a yes or a no?
Yes.
I'm looking for yes, no, sorry.
You can't have more than 10%, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
It's hard because they specifically say in, in the regulations for this or the general requirements, that this is not a mandate for affordable housing. And they refer to each town's laws around, bylaws around how much affordable housing is required, and they say, go with that. But as far as the mandate is concerned, they're very clear about the fact that this is not about producing affordable housing. So, I would say yes, given the, what the town requires, but not what they require. Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Dietrich.
My understanding is that the, this mandate does not address affordable housing, as someone has previously said.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Hall.
I'm not going yes or no, I'm going with a number. I want everyone to guess how many units you think are in the general district right now. Just a guess.
1,500. Apartment units?
No, residential.
Total dwelling units.
McDonald?
2,200.
Wow. That's a rough sound.
I think 1,500 is close, probably a little less.
I would guess a thousand, 1,200. I would say probably thousand.
Mr. Dietrich.
I have no idea, but I think we'll find out soon enough when we get into this process because it's one of, it's one of the data points that we're going to have to determine.
Do you know the answer?
I know the assessor's answer.
You said it at, you said it at the forum.
Or in the G, generally.
The G District, yeah, just a joke.
And total housing units in the town is 23, 2300, something.
Okay, interesting question. Ms. Silver.
So, I am optimistic that there's room to negotiate. If what qualities are so unique to our town that we can use that as a basis to go back and negotiate at how this applies to our town.
Gary looks like he's ready.
I think the biggest point of murders that we have is proximity to the ocean because it cuts into basic services like the sewer treatment plant, which we have to lose that. That's a component of cost that's huge. So, I think that's our biggest, the proximity to the ocean, the fact that we don't have, when we talk about a five-mile radius, well, a lot of that radius is water. So, we're, we're already working with a limited amount of real estate that stresses all these factors.
Could I ask that you narrow the question slightly? We're supposed to be done in five minutes and there's another hearing coming up.
Name one thing, name one characteristic. Johnny already got the water.
The historic district is entirely within the half-mile radius of the train station.
I was going to say landmass and the number of historical homes that are right in that in that line.
I would add to Tenny's, the ocean, just water in general, there are wetlands everywhere in town that may be very hard to build and the regs seem to allow.
Yeah, I was going to say the coastal community, so it's not only the coastline, but the low line areas. There's a lot that's special about Manchester in terms of its character, but not necessarily unique when you look at other historic towns that are undergoing the same process. But it's our vulnerability to coastal storm surges in the exact place where we need to do work that I think is most.
Yeah, I, I was going to talk about climate relevant issues and I think Manchester is one of the lowest lying towns along this coast, so it's about, it's about climate change. And if, and it has to be built into this task force, as far as I'm concerned. Whatever gets decided, I think that the dimension of whatever housing or whatever zoning gets, gets updated, I think it needs to be linked to climate change.
Thank you.
Mr. Dietrich, anything quickly? Sorry, rush.
No, I don't have anything more to add. I think you've actually gone much beyond where I thought you were going to go.
Last but not least, Ms. Tenny.
No, there's still Brian.
Brian.
I'm not sure if he was able to, was he able to reconnect?
Okay, he's gone from here right now, so.
Okay. So, currently, we allow by right, you know, single-family housing in town. We don't allow by right, multifamily housing. We have a lack of affordable housing, but we didn't get there by allowing multifamily housing because we haven't allowed it. So, we were considering multifamily housing as this task force. Can you talk about, is there, is there any benefit of multifamily housing in your mind as we go into this? You know, we have climate challenges and other things, but I'll start with you, Tim.
Is there any benefit to multifamily?
Benefit to multifamily housing in your, in your mind by right? To the town?
Sure, yeah. I mean, by right, so you're saying if...
Just in the same way that we allow single-family housing by right?
Yeah.
And so, this would be a new kind, a new housing type that we would allow? Do you see the benefit to that?
Yeah, and, but I would, I would caveat that with, there's so many different ways to think about multifamily housing. There's the, there's the Beverly, Rantoul Street way of six-story buildings, and then there, there are much more, in fact, in the matcha plan and all these, all these reports that were done, they reference lots of relevant ways of doing appropriately scaled multifamily housing. So, my answer would be sure, yeah, that's what we should be looking at.
Thanks, Gary.
Yes, I think there are a lot of benefits, especially to the community. We have, we have a lot of community members that serve our community every day but aren't residents because they don't have any place to live. I'm in favor of multifamily by right with caveat that we may need some performance standards or design guidelines to manage that. And because I actually don't think we'll get past the hurdle of reflexive noes unless we have standards applied to that, when you're talking about by right.
Yes, I think there's a benefit to the community for some of the reasons Gary said, and also because, you know, they're young families, people who, Chris Elizabeth, millennial children, who would like to live in town and might have a chance to do that. I think there are plenty of people who are in that position. But I do think, I would just like to underline and second what Gary said about design standards. It's going to be very important to have good design standards so people are not thinking about, you know, anything really that's more than three stories and it has a certain look to it.
Is there benefit? Absolutely, it will help us with our housing crisis, but I do think that when you're going to change multifamily by right, that's, you have to ask the residents at a town meeting to decide that.
I agree. I think diversity of housing type is important to encourage diversity of community.
I'd rather see it done through zoning, largely because by right, across the board, tends to throw out whatever others zoning that you have in force. So, I can speak to it from, Houston, Texas has no zoning. And so, you can have a single-family house next to a strip joint, literally. And so, I think there has to be some measure of control, but I think you can do it by enacting zoning regulations that allow, allow it to, and without the impediments that you would, you would require serious zoning changes to make it easier, but I don't think it should just be by.
By right not being the same as no zoning, just to be clear. Like, I don't think we're saying going to Houston's model.
No, well, actually, the net, net is not too different. Mr.
Oh, Jim, sorry.
Dietrich.
Did I hear someone mention my name?
Yes.
Okay, there's so many conversations going on, it's hard to hear sometimes when you're zoning. I have no issue with multifamily housing. I think it's important. We need it. We need to find places where people who work for the town can live, where young couples starting out without children or with children can afford to be here and take advantage of this gorgeous town. I think any type of by right has to have regulations, whether they're building codes, zoning codes, zoning regulations, to control what gets done. So, it's just not a hodgepodge of whatever you want, you can build it. But I don't think we want to get into designing houses and other than height and surface coverage and distance from property lines, et cetera, they're important. The rest of it, I think, should be, is okay. And I'm going to leave the meeting now because I do have something else I have to do tonight and it's going on longer than I expected. So, thank you very much for listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Solissey, I don't see.
He said he was trying, but I didn't know evidence.
Jeez, you're all so good. I don't know, it's too much.
We need more task force. Maybe it's the task force. Yeah, everybody else can go home.
Regardless of that, we need to choose to. And I think... And I think that the process, the process we're going to use is each of us votes verbally for two people. Greg will keep track. If no one gets a majority of the votes, then we will drop the lowest vote-getters and vote again. So sort of a Cambridge proportional voting system. And since we started here last time, Laura.
Oh.
Two.
Oh, this is really difficult. Just want to thank all of you.
And let me tell you why we're not doing this, but with a written ballot.
Yeah.
And that is that we are all elected officials. We are elected by people who know, need to know how we vote. So, sorry, it's not easy.
It's not easy. You're all really strong candidates and you clearly care deeply about the town and the issues. So I just, I want to thank everyone for being here and really throwing your hat in the ring and speaking with us tonight. And I wish I could just sit here and think like, so I I would say Gary Russell for your experience and your leadership on the master plan. And notes here. I'm gonna say, this is tough, but I'm gonna say Sandy for your environmental experience here.
Okay, I'm gonna say Denny for the development background and affordable housing background and longevity in the town. And Sandy, for your background, location, time in the community and all the various ways you've been involved.
So I'm not gonna vote for Gary because I think we should hire him to draft the guidelines. It would be a conflict of interest.
I'd have a conflict, yeah.
So I'm gonna say Sandy and Jim Dietrich because his experience on the CPA is very relevant.
Yeah?
I'm gonna say Rosemary and Gary, I think. I think Rosemary brought up in particular the timeline. And I think that's gonna be a problem here. It's gonna be crunch time. There's a lot of stuff to look at here. Several people brought up consensus, which I agree is also gonna be, there are trade-offs here. There's gonna be a lot of trade-offs that are gonna be difficult for the task force to sell amongst themselves. Forget about the town. Just for you to come to an agreement amongst yourselves, that's what you want to do. And Gary, because his background in the master plan and he's got a good deal of background that is gonna be quite applicable to this.
Thank you.
I'm gonna put in for Gary Russell and Sandy Bottomer-Churner. But I also sincerely hope that, you know, CPA, historic perspective, developer perspective, architect perspective, will also, these are public meetings. And I think that all of you have some really care deeply and have some real good input that whoever, the remaining task force should take these expertise and call on it day one.
Really tough. I think you're all great.
I voted for the private, the secret ballot.
I'm going to vote for Gary Russell. I've seen him write eloquently. I think he's a good communicator. I think we need that to outreach. And I think on sustainability, I was gonna put my vote for Tim McDonald there. I think we need some kind of expertise on that.
Sandy and Rosemary Costello. Given that I've made a speech telling you all how wonderful you are and that it's a very hard choice.
Denny and Liz.
I just, before I say this, to me, I wrote an email about this earlier. The select board has always had a policy of interviewing candidates and then at the following meeting, appointing them. I think that seeing that three of the people may not be here in a week, electing people or appointing people tonight is not a good look. The votes that I'm going to cast are for people, not because of, they're for other, they're for new views. CBA already has someone, Historic already has someone, so please don't take offense to that. You're all, and thank you for coming here. So my vote's gonna be for Denny and Liz.
Denny and Liz.
I'm gonna go with Chris's theory that we shouldn't vote for Gary. Maybe we want to hire him. So I'm gonna vote for Denny and Sandy. Denny and Sandy.
So Greg, do you have a count?
I do. Well, get on there. So Sandy was the high vote, get it? At six votes. And we have we have two at four, Denny and Gary. And then a couple at two and one at one, two at one.
So we have, we have three, so two people are tied in second place?
Correct.
Who are the two people, I mean?
We have Sandy with six votes, Gary at four votes, and Denny with four votes.
And who had two votes?
And then at two votes, we have Liz and Rosemary.
Could we entertain three at large? I can know that number, because we're at ten right now.
I think that would be more than the planning board has representatives in this as a planning board project.
And I don't think that changing the rules was on the agenda.
Just trying to get the-
Okay, so let's call, Sandy was elected. So let's vote again with Denny, Gary, Liz, Rosemary, and Tim.
No Tim.
How many was it, Jim?
We're voting for one?
No, just we moved between Denny and Gary?
Okay.
So I'm sorry, so just voting between Liz, Rosemary, I'm sorry.
Greg, I would like your advice. Should we eliminate the one, the person who got one vote? And, or should we also eliminate the people who got two votes?
The person who got two votes, I'm happy with the two people who got the next highest votes. That's the way it seems to me. You should go with the two people that the next highest votes.
Okay, in that case, let us, let's vote for either Denny or Gary.
Start over there.
I told you already, I'm going with your theory, Chris, so my vote is for Denny.
Oh, Denny.
Denny.
Gary.
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 It's three-three right now. Three-three.
We're starting again?
Denny, 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 Gary, Gary, Gary. If you guys split, we're gonna have to trust each other.
Okay, I gotta be consistent. Gary?
Denny.
Woo.
Denny.
Gary.
Where's Brian when we need him, geez?
Becky's on there.
Becky. Any suggestions, Greg, on?
If I may.
Gary?
Yeah. How about I make this easier and withdraw my candidacy and promise to participate in other ways?
Okay. I accept it.
Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations, Sandy and Denny. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you all very much.
Give the applause is for all of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for being willing to step up.
Congratulations, Greg. Congratulations, I'll be saying more of them.
Thank you, welcome.
I'm just hiding it below. I'm gonna move as soon as it's, it's so hot.
The select board?
Oh, I love that. That's fabulous.
Who's in the select board?
Absolutely.
Yes. Yes. We do it during the joint meeting with the planning board.
And thanks to the two of you for running in a very efficient meeting. It could have gone very differently, so thank you.
Yep. Okay, anyone need a break?
He says MBTA at-large representative. He doesn't say MBTA task force. People might think it's for the MBTA.
Anyone need a break? Very great. Otherwise, we'll get right to it. We got a long.
It's like the standing, stand up for somebody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Hughes.
She withdrew.
Maybe sometimes people feel like, you know, sometimes no one should, they saw the other people.
Yeah.
You have a public hearing before something.
Yeah, we're doing that right now.
Okay, we're in the, if you need us, we're way down off our row.
Piling up?
Just three of us.
Got any food down here?
We have Mentos.
That's a concept of interest to us.
We'll take Mentos. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the hybrid planning board meeting of May 8th. Court order, Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Ms. Feliciano.
Yeah.
Ms. Foley.
Yeah.
Foley.
There's Filbert.
Here.
Tim. Thank you.
Okay, we can start.
Take advantage of the break. Ms. Tenny, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay, thanks. We have a full quorum tonight. I'd like to remind all board members, guests, to best be recognized by the chairs they wish to speak. This meeting's being recorded. First item on the agenda, acknowledgement receipt of correspondence. This is what I got from Gail, Department Environmental Protection Waterways Regulation Program, Jeffrey Keneev, Nine Touch Point Road, Department of Bio Protection Waterways Regulation Program, Crocker's Boathyard, Town and Warden Public Hearing on Poll Locations, Town and Warden Notice of Decision, Reappeal of Building Inspectors' Determination, City of Boston Notice of Public Hearing. I now at this time like to open the late-
I would like to make a comment about correspondence. The things that were distributed to the candidates, there was a letter from you, Betsy, a few people, and that was addressed to two residents from town, disputing some information that was printed. The board never received that, so I just want to make note of that. And could you please distribute it?
I don't know what you're referring to.
You signed a letter to, I believe, John Jay and another John, and it was included and distributed to the candidates tonight. And it was signed as-
I didn't sign anything. What, I don't know what you're referring to. Could you, after the meeting, can you directly send it to me?
Betsy can send it to you. She was on there also. Becky was on there.
Betsy, are you aware of this letter?
You were copied on the, so this was, the letter that was sent to Mr. Jay and to another resident regarding the, there seemed to be a lot of inaccuracies about what was viewed by as the MBTA zoning. So you and Greg Fetterspiel and Becky Jakes and I wrote the letter to the Cricket, which clarified that, you know. Yeah, that was a while ago.
Okay.
And what happened was, I sent to either, it was sent through Debbie Powers or me, information to the candidates who were being considered tonight. I sent, basically, they were sent three documents. That letter, the MBTA zoning application submission, and there was another document. I forgot what it was. So
So, okay.
That's what she's referring to.
The planning board never received this, so it was signed and sent to people.
You signed it.
I sent, we sent a clarification letter to the Cricket.
But you sent to residents, I guess disputing what they were saying, and you signed it, yet the planning board never saw it.
Excuse me, is this a topic for the meeting tonight?
It's correspondence. And it's correspondence, but it said it was a public document and the chair of the board just said it.
Not correspondence to us.
Well, it should have been.
I think it was just a clarification letter that just pointed out some inaccuracies. And I'll send it to the board. If they want to see it, you can see it.
I just don't know how, we're claiming that this is a public document. I mean, publishing in the Cricket doesn't make it a public document.
So now I'd like to open the belated public hearing continued from 4:10 on adoptions of rules and regulations, Mass. General Law 40A, Section 9, Mass. General Laws 41, Sections 81A and 81B, on planning board general operating procedures, conducting meetings. And I'd like to open this up to run this part of the meeting to Vice Chair Sarah Creighton with help from Betsy Ware.
So maybe what we might do first is, Betsy has given us revised regulations. And Betsy, you want to summarize the material? It's in your staff memo or, before we take up section by section?
Sure. So basically, a number of you provided comments. I worked to incorporate as many as I could into the document. There were a couple of things that I highlighted in my staff memo that were not included. And I felt there was pretty good reasoning for it. So pretty much, Article One. I believe most everything was taken and included. Article Two. I had put some language in about recording of meetings. If somebody wanted to record a meeting, we do record meetings. I think Laura had a concern that couldn't we just drop this? But I think, as I recall, legal counsel had made a comment to the effect that if somebody wanted to record a meeting, they could. So I kept that in there. Section, Article Three. Section, Article 3. I had put language in about how zoning amendments would take place. And Mary Foley wanted to see this section deleted. And I explained at one of the prior planning board meetings that sometimes it's very convenient to have at least a primer. And actually, the language came out of Mass. General Law, but it's handy to have it there as opposed to, um, not having it and having somebody have to go through Mass. General Law. That section also discussed citizens petitions, which I think Mary had asked at a later time how citizens petitions work. Or what the process was for citizens petitions. So that section, Article 3 includes that.
I'm gonna just interrupt you for a second, Betsy. I think Mary was wondering how we're gonna discuss these, so I thought we would get a summary from Betsy, and then take them article by article and do like the, the town meeting type hold. And I did, had asked for people to submit motions for review of these, and I have a few to distribute when she finishes.
So I do, I, I, but I do want to make clear, we didn't get this until Friday afternoon. And I went away this weekend, so I had about an hour to look at it. So I think we're gonna have to go, in my opinion, through the whole document, because there is many things that I made comments on that are not in here. So we have a very loose rule of, you know, Thursday, which really doesn't justify for a eighty-page document, even if it was Thursday. So I don't see us voting on this tonight, but I'm happy to start going through it.
So let's let, so that we can come back to how far we're gonna get tonight. Let's let Betsy continue, I was just trying to respond to your, you know, given that she's not here, she couldn't assess that you were trying to figure out if we were gonna talk about these individuals. So, go ahead, Betsy, you're back to Article 4.
So Article 4 and 5. The, there were a couple of things. I need some clarification from the board on whether they would prefer electronic copies or paper copies, because that's important to determine how many copies are needed. I mean, at a minimum, we need three or four in Town Hall for, to make them available at the clerk's office, at the library, a paper copy with the planning board office, and potentially one with the town engineer. But if people want paper copies versus, um, versus electronic versions, then I need to know that. So that we can figure out how many plans, plan sets we need. So that's true on special permit and site plan. And then, I'd like it if the planning board could adopt the applications for site plan and special permit. Then continuing through the table of contents. Basically, what I'd like to see is all of the documents that are in Appendix F of the subdivision rules and regulations, all the application forms and fee schedules either come into the rules and regs document or be separate application forms and documents. They do not belong in the subdivision rules and regs. The subdivision rules and regs eventually will be updated. They haven't been updated in quite a while. The driveway entrance, sections, I'm sorry, Section 7. I have DPW working on diagrams. And so what I'd like to do is continue that hearing until the 22nd. So I can, I can get those documents finalized. And then appendices. We have appendices, and then we have references, which were the suggestion of Sue Filbrick. And I think the references are pretty inclusive.
Okay. Great. Now I'm gonna distribute the motions that we did receive specific to making changes to. I have to share one. Oh. You can look on me. We got one. So what I thought we would do is take section by section, if you look at the table of contents, and just, let's see, I would like to, if we can, get through at least some, some of these in terms of, um, close the public hearing, at least on certain articles and vote them, if we can, for some of these, particularly the issue around the hiring of consultants, because we're gonna need that very soon. So let's just start with Article 1 and 2. Are there any holds or additional motion? I did not receive any comments on those two.
Yes.
Okay.
So I had, so it looks like, um, Article 1, I guess. Section 2 is powers, responsibilities, and authority of the planning board. I had suggested that it be broken out into those three sections to make it easier, but that's fine. It looks like the beginning ones reference, are mostly referencing Mass. General Law. Yet not all of them. So I had added in, um, I'm trying to see which ones were added, which ones not. From my opinion. Conduct site plan review, storm water management, scenic roads, hire certified professionals on specific projects when necessary, blasting guidelines, and earth removal. Wondering why those weren't added.
They weren't, um, and the earth removal one in particular was not added because the, um, because we haven't really addressed earth removal in the other section of the bylaw.
Isn't earth removal and the zoning?
It's in our general bylaw with the planning board. You know, if you reach over a certain threshold, it goes to the planning board.
Okay.
Two hundred and fifty cubic feet. Thanks. Thank you. And we approved blasting guidelines, I think less than a year ago, after town.
The blasting guidelines, there was never a public hearing on it.
The town vote.
Which is, which is why it didn't include it.
The town meeting voted on the blasting guidelines, and we just created a document after that.
What she's saying in order to have regulations.
Oh, okay.
So I think those two, um, the scenic roads, storm water management, site plan review, and hiring professionals.
There's no reason why they couldn't have been included here. That's, I mean, this has been a point from day one.
So, um, is it, I guess, is it important to create a catch-all additional set of responsibilities for the planning board? That includes these additional responsibilities that we have? Or is there a way we can create it in a generic?
Well, I thought.
So you want to add blasting, storm water, and earth removal?
We're not storm water anymore. We're not storm water anymore, that's the DPW.
I thought they had the storm water application in here.
Well, that's another matter.
We had both. Okay, so. In both? So we can put a mark against, next to storm water, but yeah, so. Site, conduct site plan review, scenic roads, hire certified professionals on specific projects when necessary, blasting guidelines, earth removal. And then I had the three added responsibility, because that was the title of the Section 2. I had added for responsibility, encourage most appropriate use of land and water within the town, prevent overcrowding of land, maintain and enhance the natural and historic character of Manchester by the Sea. So obviously, those are just plucked from our zoning and master plan.
So you framing that as a motion? To add those, those additional responsibilities?
Well, I had it added. So I don't know what this process is, but that's what I had added, and they weren't added. So I don't think it needs to be a motion.
Well, it's not in this, it's not in the version that we have in front of us, so I think we should have it as a motion to provide input on scenic roads, blasting, uh.
You don't have scenic roads in town.
We have the ability to, if, if somebody wants to.
Right, but if you don't have them, you don't put it in there until you adopt scenic roads.
You have to pass a bylaw to create them.
You don't just go by the state law?
No, you have to go to town meeting to adopt if specific road is a scenic road.
No, yes, agreed, but you don't have to have a bylaw for that.
Yes, you do.
Oh, we have to adopt a bylaw?
Yes, it does indicate a road, it's a scenic road.
Scenic, scenic roads involve trees and.
Stone walls, yes. Like all the ways.
So it has to go to town meeting first to designate the road, and then from there, you would adopt rules and regulations. And then we would put it in here.
Yeah, but my question is, do we have to have a zoning bylaw without the scenic roads?
It's not, it's not, it's not a zoning issue, it's a Mass. General Law issue.
Right, so, yeah, so I guess that loops me back around that. I think it does fall under the planning board. So of course, it would have to be approved at town meeting for the scenic road, but that falls under our responsibilities.
Couldn't we be more generic?
If you have a scenic road in town, which you don't.
So I guess my question is, can we have a, a, a more generic set of responsibilities that encompass things for the future? Other such responsibilities as designated by Mass. General Law, comma, blasting regulations, uh, the other things you mentioned. Earth removal, um, per zoning requirements, earth removal, and.
Didn't we adopt blasting?
Yes, that's what I just said.
This is a little ridiculous.
And we, that document should be attached on here.
Okay, so earth removal and what's the last one?
Earth removal, blasting, scenic roads, storm, oh, you removed, um, site plan review.
Site plan review.
And hire of certified professionals.
Hiring some professionals is elsewhere in the body.
Okay, that's fine.
Site plan review, and can I say, and other, um, other matters as designated by, by town bylaws and state laws. So that's, so if there's a general, a provision in general law that comes up next, next town meeting, we will, it's stated that we have authority on that.
But we have authority on earth removal.
Yeah, I'm saying in other matters delegated to the planning board.
It's kind of nebulous.
Yeah.
Oh, after those, okay.
To planning board by town, by the town or the state.
Okay.
By town, town, bylaws or state law.
And then the other three responsibilities?
The other three responsibilities are, oh, blasting, earth removal, and site plan review?
No, 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 that's, um, that's why I thought it would be good to be in sections. But, so it's powers, responsibilities, and authority, so obviously, those other things would be authority. Responsibility is that we encourage most appropriate use of land and water within the town, prevent overcrowding of land, maintain and enhance the natural and historic character of Manchester by the Sea.
Where, is that in zoning?
Yeah.
I didn't think we had this definition of the planning board in zoning.
No, it's not a definition of planning board, but that's, if we are the land use, that's what it says. That's under authority and purpose in the zoning.
It's a new Section 1, right?
Yeah.
So this is the purpose of zoning, not the purpose, I don't know, it seems to me to be redundant.
It's right from our planning board website.
Yeah, it's, you're right, it's in, there is a purpose in the zoning bylaw. Encouraging the appropriate use of land, prevent overcrowding, prevent undue concentration of population on one hand, preventing excessive scattering of population on the other, incurring various slot sizes and housing types, minimize traffic hazards, provide for adequacy of light, air, and sanitation, reduce hazards from fire, et cetera. Assist in economic provisions, prevent blight and pollution of the environment, maintain and enhance natural, historic amenities, conserve the value of land and buildings, promote the development of sustainable coastline, and implement the recommendations of Town Master Plan.
So, excuse me, that language was included in the Rules and Regs, in the general section. And the part that she's referring to, the board is responsible for encouraging the most appropriate use of land and water within the town, prevent overcrowding of land, and maintaining and enhancing natural beauty and historic character of Manchester by the Sea. That was included in the, um, the tracker change. And I don't know why it didn't flip into the clean copy.
It's not in the track change copy either.
I see it in the track change copy.
I don't have it in mine.
Well, I gave everybody the tracker change and the clean change, and I don't know why it didn't come out in the clean, it didn't, wasn't included in the clean change.
Under Section 2, last paragraph?
So can we just add it back in? I, I see it.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that language.
Do you see it, Susan?
And, um. I don't see it.
So, and then, well, it's in there. And then the, um.
Just, I'm gonna download it from the site. So this is the. Special permits is in there too.
In the clean copy. The copy I'm looking at, the bottom of Section 2, it's its own little paragraph, what you were just describing, Mary.
Line 109.
In the tracker one?
No, in the clean one, it's line 109, in the tracker version. There is no line.
Total. So, yeah, if we could just add that.
Okay, so we're gonna add that language back in.
Yeah, I don't, I have any problem with that.
I guess to me, this is what the purpose of the subcommittee was to do, not to do this on a public meeting and wasting this time. This is the nitty gritty that we were supposed to work through. So if this seems like it's gonna take a really long time, I don't know. Maybe we should just plan a subcommittee meeting next week and have Betsy and the four of us hash through this.
That's a good idea.
This is a lot of nitty detail. Yeah, it's very painful, yeah.
So I'm thinking that the, that your track changes did not make it into the clean version, but.
I don't know why that is, because I hit the accept button.
I see it in the clean version that I have, just downloaded, it's weird.
Mine doesn't have draft, so I'm looking at it different.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Others, can we just get at least the high level?
Is there anything that's clean now and can go?
Well, I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about.
Are we gonna finish Article 1, or are we gonna go through?
Yeah, let's, let's just keep going through Article 1. We need to clarify the track changes in the end of Section 1A. And, uh, other, um, other comments? I had a couple.
So, I had comments in Section 3.
Section 3 of, of Article 1?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I had put in there that the chair shall transact, transact the official business of the board and supervise the work of experts, clerks and other assistants, board admin and or town planner. I think that's important that we have a point person on the board if it's, if we want to do it somebody other than the chair. I mean, I don't know how we would designate that, but. That's kind of what you're doing now, Ron, right?
Love to appoint someone.
I think that's the role of the chair, though.
So my concern with having a planning board member. Basically, anytime I meet with a developer, the planning board member has to be in attendance with it. That makes no sense to me.
I don't think that's what it says.
Certainly. So for example, we, there's a, there was recently a filing for the composting facility. And there is a staff meeting, which certainly any board member can attend at 10 o'clock on the 15th of May. So.
It has to be posted and all that. I don't think you should do that.
No, it's a stamp. It's not a public meeting.
Well, if the, if we all show up.
Is it for the parking at the compost site?
No, it's for specials.
Oh, let's not get off on one of these.
What I'm saying is, it doesn't. It doesn't make sense to me to have.
Could it be the chair or his designee? Wouldn't that be your, the way to handle it?
No, well, I don't, I, this, I think this is being interpreted different than what is meant. That the, the chair has to supervise to some extent what the admin does, what the town planner does, what the consultants that we hire do, right? I mean, somebody's got to, so I didn't see that anywhere. That's why I added this.
Gail and I are overseen by the town, may, town administrator.
And that's still what the section five.
We have no control over them.
So we have no control, okay. So if you have no control over the admin or the town planner, what about if we hire consultants and stuff?
They're overseen by the.
Town planner.
Town planner.
And the board?
No, we do, yeah, but we just want to point.
Yeah, this doesn't make any sense.
Well, who pays them?
Lady board budget.
No, it's actually going, if it's through this, this 81G, it's going to be the applicant.
Well, the applicant deposits the money and we spend it, is that right?
Yeah, we do. It's, we're asking for the opinion.
I mean, I mean, Gail and I coordinate with Ron on the agenda. And, you know, making sure that we have everything in place for agenda items, but.
Okay, so if, so, okay, so we won't put that in. I, I had no idea it was just strictly through the town administrator, okay. And then if, did you have, I have something in section four, if you didn't have anything, Sarah.
I, mine is later.
So my question in section four was that, I know there was some explanation why we don't have a clerk anymore, signing the minutes and such, but I didn't get any official word on that. So I was hoping for where I could find that officially, we no longer need a clerk.
When the planning board was adopted in the 1930s, it was adopted as a seven-member board and there was a chair and a vice chair and there was no clerk.
No, no, but we've had a clerk for your time.
Yeah, so we always had to sign the meeting minute, yeah, after the meeting minutes were approved. I was the clerk. I was the clerk.
And then who came in for you? No one?
No one.
I think Gary Gilchrist.
Gary, but I don't think he signed anything.
No, I don't think so.
But I just, I'm wondering why we don't need to sign those anymore. I mean.
Maybe you could just check with the town clerk on that issue and find out if they, if our minutes should be signed. I think it's because everything is electronic during COVID is when it sort of fell by the wayside. So I'm not sure they are now signed for any of these.
Helene was very, she was a stickler on that and so I. We're getting kind of loosey goosey and if we're not signing it and we should.
I think they get voted, so maybe it's a technical.
As soon as you adopt them, they get revised and they go to the town clerk.
Right, so the question is, do they need to be physically signed? And if the answer is yes.
Gail, you have a comment?
There is no board in town that is physically signing minutes. There is no clerk signing minutes for any board. I, I literally have worked on most of the boards and it is no longer happening. It's kind of an antiquated practice.
Okay, so it just, so it's, we just did it as a town and it's not required anymore?
It's not required. There were several steps that, that you followed that nobody else in town was following.
Okay, thank you.
Board didn't comply with mass general law or was not required in mass general law.
Good, what's next?
Section five.
Such as. Public, um. Mole.
Me, recording a minutes?
Recording a minutes?
No, it was planning board staff, section five.
What version is this?
You don't have a section five?
What number, what number is it?
Oh, article one, section five.
Planning board staff.
Okay, okay.
So 5.1, it says that the board administrator posts the agenda and I thought it was the town clerk that posted agenda.
That's correct.
But she gives the agenda to the clerk.
Right, but it's posted by the.
So then I think we'd have to say, you know, gives the agenda to the clown, town clerk. Because it's saying posting here.
Okay, okay.
I think the ZBA has a rule that if you miss three consecutive meetings.
You're out.
You have to leave, yeah. I mean, we said we could do nothing before.
We should have.
So I mean, I think we need to talk about what we feel like a.
Three consecutive meetings.
I believe that's what it is.
In a row, so not three over a year or something.
And I think it says something like subject to removal, maybe there's an option to keep the person if they.
I think it's different when we're, as we're elected. I think we went through that with Greg. I think because we're elected, we can't do that.
Do we know that?
I'm quite sure that's the case. I think he just stepped out. But maybe Betsy, you can just confirm with Greg that because we're elected, we can't have any provisions for removal of members. I'm sure that we talked about that recently.
That's not in section five, right?
Yeah.
Well, I know it came up with this.
Planning board duties.
We couldn't, we couldn't.
We couldn't do it, they made about that. Because it was elected. If it was appointed, it's different.
Talking about the Gary Gilchrist.
See, the ZBA is appointed.
Yes, that's what happened.
Yeah.
But whether we can adopt that rule or not.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know, I mean, you know, that's, that's a, that's a good point.
You have to look at the general laws. The general laws are very clear.
So what does it say?
Have to look.
That if it's an elected board, there's, you can't remove an elected board member without. They can be warned, but they basically can't be removed.
But can we?
The Canadian, the, what, the California rep, what's her name? Feinstein.
No, Feinstein.
Feinstein, same thing, right?
Can't remove a senator.
Can't remove a senator, really.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll check.
Yeah.
And then I had asked if we could put in a section for subcommittees, like how, how they're formed, specify their responsibilities, how disbanded, stuff like that. It would be good to have that clarity. And then I asked for a section that would list out the planning board reports. So, you know, we're supposed to do one for town meeting. We're supposed to write a report to the select board on any zoning, you know.
That's in mass general law, so if you want to add it, we can add it per mass general law.
Well, but I guess my.
Process of it, I think.
Yeah, the process and, you know, I mean, most of this is stuff that, you know, that's listed out as mass general law. So I, I'm not clear where we're drawing the line that we're saying what we do and list the mass general law and then other areas we're not listing. So, I mean, I think anybody coming in as a planning board member or anybody as a resident, I mean, it would be good to know what reports the planning board does, I would think. Maybe nobody cares.
I had suggested in that, on that vein, that we, outside of regulations, create a calendar that sort of outlines the things that happen with some regularity every two months. And I would, I would suggest that we put reports that get generated on that rather than put them in regulations. So just a, a list of, of things. So to your point, to help the board or a new chair know what's coming or the, a new planner or. But that it doesn't need to go in this.
So how are these things that we're discussing getting changed? Like that, you know, what we just talked about, the posting of the agenda and, you know, listing out subcommittees, are, are they just going to be changes or we have to do motions for all of these?
Well. Why don't, why don't we get them all in one thing and then we'll do a motion to adopt them is what I could suggest.
Can we do them by section though?
Yeah, in the article one. Subcommittees, does the board feel that we need to dictate subcommittees as a, in regulations?
I hate to tie our hands because the subcommittees can be so different.
Feel like that they can be.
It could be something.
Well, could this, we say the, the board may, may form subcommittees with a particular, with a specific task, short term or long term, by a vote of the committee and.
By a vote of the board.
By a vote of the board. By a vote of the board, subcommittees may be formed for specific short or long-term tasks.
Is that like, any meeting of the subcommittee is.
Is a public, public meeting.
People's.
Yeah.
And follows, yeah, and follows the same as the notice for public meetings and public.
Right, and they'll elect a chair and they'll have a minutes.
We don't know if we need two chairs. Can we?
Yeah, can we say just tasks, for specific task and then it's a.
Specific tasks.
Not a short-term, long-term thing.
The board may designate it, subcommittees for specific tasks.
And the makeup would be subject to the.
Right.
To the planning.
Subcommittee, subcommittees for specific tasks.
Isn't that enough in the majority of the vote, board votes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Task and the membership.
Subcommittee shall meet in public. Shall follow meeting, open.
Do we even need to say that? I mean, isn't that all?
Well, that's been a contentious thing. Shall meet, shall meet and post, shall follow meeting posting rules. Any, any objection to that? Great, thank you. Okay.
Just point of order. Do you, do you want to get through a section and then take a phrase and have cell signaling come in?
That's what I think we should do.
And then we can get back at it if we want or?
But we're almost through section one. I'm hoping.
So my next one was.
Coming soon.
C, section three A. Just points of clarity, it says, notice in local paper, it says, notice for some public hearings. I would think we'd have to notice all public hearings.
In the paper? All public hearings?
Yes.
So I don't know why it said some and it said the same thing for notice to abudders, notice for some public hearings.
That's, is there any public hearings that don't need to be posted?
I, I would delete the words some.
But there can be public hearings on other butters.
Notice the right.
Notice for required public hearing.
Yeah.
What, when are we doing meeting? Well, you'd still have to notice the town and stuff, right, if abutting properties.
I think that's pretty, that's cleaned, spelled out later in some of the other.
And then in D, section two. And I don't even know if it was in the.
Endorsement of ANR plans?
Uh, no, I, because it said, section two is the vote and I just wanted to, there's, there was nothing in there that a tie vote means the term, the item fails.
That's Robert's.
Yeah, that's.
Again, this was put in, well, the draft that I'm reading.
Says does not pass, yeah.
Valid vote shall be a simple majority. If there's a quorum, a tied vote shall be recorded as such and does not pass. Votes on special permit applications shall require two-thirds super majority, vote of five or more members of the board.
Okay, so that's in there, okay, thanks.
Well, while you're looking the next one, I'll tell you, the one that I came up with, it's under consultant services 2.3, it's line 479, if you're looking at it with line numbers. Instead of a planning board, have daily communication with, or that consultants shall be, report only to the planning board with daily coordination with the town planner. It should be regular, I mean, daily for any consultant would be.
Costly.
Yeah, expensive. And then the other thing I suggested was on line 506. Minimum for, the minimum qualification shall consist of both an educational degree and three or more years of practice in the field at issuer-related field, comma, and current license if applicable. And.
What license are we talking about?
Well, current license, applicable license. So I'm, I'm harkening back to the tennis courts from the school when the landscape architect's license had expired. He was a license, he had all, he had 50 years of experience, he was educational degree, but he had an expired license.
What section are you in?
This was on appeals, it's at the back of section one.
2.6.
2.6.
Section 276?
In article one?
On the back.
Under fees.
Under fees.
Up, up fees.
It's a little bit odd, but anyway. So.
So you said that there has to be registered?
I said a current license if applicable in the field. So if it's an architect or a PE or a landscape architect or a hydrologist, if there is an applicable license. I mean, there aren't applicable licenses for certain things, but there are for others.
Some things are certified, some are licensed.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I think that whatever language we have in our bylaw, when we say registered, you know, landscape architect, engineer, blah, blah, that should just be the same in here.
It could be. I was just trying to keep it.
You want to say license in Massachusetts?
Yeah, current Massachusetts license.
But we have all that language in there.
Yeah, I was just saying that in that place, it just does not have license on page 14. So I think I gave you those two changes already in my, in the motions. All right, that's it. Any other things on article one? Do we need to close the public hearing if we're going to vote this? Or maybe I can make a suggestion that we.
Let's continue it.
Continue it.
To the 22nd, that's what Betsy was saying.
Okay.
For section seven, we, she said on section seven.
Oh, that's the, the driveway cuts. I'd like to try to button up one, section one, article one here. What I'd like to do, maybe we're going to, since we're not going to close the public hearing, what I'd like to do is ask for a motion to indicate intent that we're going to be closing out article one. And then we'll, we will vote it in its revised sec, state when we, when we close the public hearing.
I, yeah, I agree, let's, I agree.
Or is there any object, any other objections to article one? Leave it that way rather than a vote.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's a hard way to vote, doing this on the fly, I'll be honest with you.
We'll get a final, we'll get a final. We'll get a final, we'll get a final from Betsy.
Uh, so what are we voting, just the ad?
I guess we're just, I'm just asking if there are any other objections or concerns.
Um, let me just check one.
In other words, can we put, put-
Cuz I think we need a clean copy to vote, yeah.
Yeah, can we, is it possible we got a printed copy for people next meeting?
That would be great, a color coded one. I don't have a color printer. I had put it in here and I, I'm just trying to see if it got made in here. The, under section E, revised application materials. If we put a deadline in here, so other towns will post, you know, kind of like, um, you know, if you meet on Tuesdays, you have to have your materials in by the preceding-
Yeah, the ZBA does that.
Thursdays, or, you know, there's, there's a calendar and so it's very clear. And so I just, under D, if we could add something that I just said, other towns post deadline dates for meetings so that there's no confusion. This deadline date is for, for inclusion on the agenda, we should include this.
Are you saying something like for business days prior to the, uh, meeting where this?
Can we put that on the checklist rather than in the regulations?
Yeah, I, I guess I would like to keep, I think we have to be a little nimble on that. I would like to see us have that be our practice rather than a regulation.
Just things, just-
I think most communities have it as a separate document if, and so perhaps, somebody like the ZBA has something that says, you know, if you wanna show up for this meeting and wanna be heard at this meeting, you know, you have to get your application in by X because we have to advertise and all that.
Yeah, right, and this is different than, than the business meetings that we conduct, which, not to say that it's not a, certainly a goal.
Well, I think the problem is a completed application, so that part of this is, we get them, they're not complete, they're not informative.
I think it does say we have to have a completed application, I think is in there.
Can we put this on the checklist if it's not a requirement, so it's all in place?
Yeah.
It states that I, I, your town planner would review the application for completeness and we wouldn't stamp it in until it's complete. And then, then you run into the issue of, if you have a staff meeting and there's still additional information that needs to be provided, then you ask the applicant for additional information, there's some back and forth on this, so.
I think the bottom line is, if we're gonna post Thursday afternoon, the application has to be in by Thursday afternoon. So, we have the close of business Thursdays, that's when posting happened. If it's not in by Thursday, it shouldn't be on the agenda, we shouldn't talk about it, I don't think that's unreasonable.
Yeah, but then the issue is, is if you, if you want additional information that's not required but needed for various reasons, then, you know, like the DPW may wanna see something a little different or something, then, you know, do you count that?
Yeah, I think we should leave it as a practice and leave it as flexible, the reason, again, as you say, if, if you get an email from the DPW on Monday morning, it's short and, you know.
Things come in a piecemeal, it's been my experience.
That doesn't prevent it from not being heard that night. And, and my concern is getting someone that applies or puts an application in on a Friday and there's no information out there saying that this is our practice and then there's twenty-one days and things start to click. So, I think we need to put it in writing so people understand what the deadlines are and if you put it in on a Friday, we're losing days at that point and people can take advantage of that circumstance. So, unless we put it in writing, people are going to take advantage of it, so.
Well, Christine, are you saying, for example, uh-
A and Rs.
Well, I'm saying that an application cannot be considered or played, posted on the agenda until the application has been determined to be complete. Only then can it be posted.
I believe so, yes, I think we've talked about this for many years.
That seems reasonable.
What's the definition of complete?
Whatever the town planner says, checks it off and signs off on it, I mean, that's really what we need.
It could be on the checklist.
Yeah.
Good.
I mean, we can't start, the clock-
Let's put it on the checklist, yeah, put it on the checklist.
Put it on the checklist.
Yep.
So it doesn't, so it would not go in at section one, but it would go in a checklist.
I, I don't have any problem with having a separate list that says, if you wanna get on this agenda, this is when you have to submit it. And usually, you know, for a special permit, you have sixty-five days to hold a public hearing and in that sixty-five days, usually, usually the planning board hears it earlier. But, you know, if there's some give and take because, you know, we're trying to work out solutions to something, then it may be forty-five days that you have your hearing. So, you know, it needs to be a little flex.
Well, sometimes we get it and then we make some conditions and then it comes back and then like the burn dump that went on, it wasn't complete.
So let's, uh, let's put it on the checklist, are we in agreement that we'll put this on the checklist? That the, that the clock starts when the application is complete?
And I'd like to make a recommendation, procedural one here, which is we all get printed copies of this final document,
Yes.
so we're not looking at different versions or, or we have printers print them out or whatever.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, okay. Any other thing else on, on section, on Article One, so we can maybe close that out?
We had one more, I think we had one more.
So that would be on the applicant to provide printed copies.
No, that, we're talking about this, printed copies of this.
Oh, this?
This document.
Of this document, with the line numbers.
Sure, we can have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree on that.
And where will we get them?
Down at the planning board.
In, in the box?
In the, yeah, so, um, I think the recommendation, Betsy, is to get printed hard copies for everyone in the town mail, in the planning board mailbox.
So, as I understand it, and I've been told that it's only postal service mail that goes into that box.
Oh.
And, um-
Well, or someplace that we can get it after hours, so.
We used to have a mailbox.
Yeah, they've changed it down there, they've changed it, yeah.
Yeah, but planning board, they do.
So someplace where it's six offline, yeah, yeah, okay.
So let's, um-
I had one more. Two point three, consultant services. It says, the consultant shall be chosen by and reported only to the planning board with daily coordination with town planner and or administrator. I don't know that we need to specify daily coordination.
That's what I said, regular.
There is a change.
Change it to regular.
Oh, you changed it, I'm sorry, I was busy looking.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, so at least move to continue the public hearing to-
Twenty-second.
Um.
But we're, and gonna get printed copies for next time.
Yeah, okay, move to, yeah, I'll move to, move, continue this hearing till the, uh, twenty-second.
Till the second.
At what time?
Uh, what time should we continue to, Betsy?
Uh, well, we have a, we have the compost coming in, what time is that?
That's at seven.
That's at seven, so let's go at eight.
Okay.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any? Any opposed? Okay, let's go to self signaling, could somebody get Mr., Mr.?
I do think we could save a lot of time if we do so this often. Not offline, we're in a subcommittee.
Maybe we could also, maybe we could talk about having the subcommittee do that, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Cuz I think the driveway, if you look at my suggestions for the driveway, um, it's gotta get fixed.
Uh, is anyone out there need to have their screen shared from self signaling? Peter, is that you?
Oh, maybe that, yeah, me, I guess.
I don't know who's gonna put it there. Is somebody out there that needs the screen share to put it up?
Yes, he's coming, he's right behind me.
Oh, you want me to share, yeah.
So you will, um, he will just come on the meeting by two?
Yeah, I have, I have a link, so if I can join that, then I can-
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yep, join and I'll do the screen share.
Make sure you're joined without audio.
Wednesday.
You can also go right into the wall back there.
No, not with that, you can also go to your time.
You can also go right into the wall back there.
We can go right into the wall here.
No, I'm gonna like do the next one. Oh, or I can at least hold it up.
You wanna pull it out?
Yeah.
Is it, is it a PowerPoint?
Is that the, is the document you sent us?
Yeah, why, it was a PDF.
I could read Tuesday or Wednesday.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm trying to make a, I'm trying to make a mention. Yeah.
Oh, no, they have your document.
They use PDF though.
We can show PDFs.
So, just for the audience, this is a self signaling, parking requirement discussion informal.
Well, Craig's sitting up, I'll get started.
Nice.
It is, quarter of nine. What do you do? I'm Mark Glovsky, lawyer with offices at eight Washington Street in Beverly. I'm here tonight representing self signaling technology together with Craig Thompson to my immediate right, who's CST's chief global operations officer, and Mark Stonier from Walker Consultants, he's director of design services and he has been working on the design of structured parking garage for self signaling. And the reason we're here tonight is because we need your guidance in order to make the next two steps before we're prepared to file our application with the board, which we're hoping will happen in June at this point. As you know, you last year enacted new and comprehensive parking requirements and there are two aspects of those parking requirements that we're eager to discuss with you tonight. First off, you have specified the size of parking spaces and what you'll hear from Mark Stonier is that in designing structured parking, there are certain other standards that are applied. Your new parking provisions specifically give the planning board the right to deviate from or modify the parking requirements if what is being proposed would enable a better project. And we think that after you've heard our presentation tonight, you will agree with that. Overall, the purpose of the new parking requirements, among other things, was to reduce land clearing and environmental harms from impervious surfaces and urban heat island, as well as to control development costs. Well, in this case, to, to build structured parking does not mean that we're gonna be controlling development costs. In fact, the parking garage will cost approximately fifteen million dollars. Surface parking would cost between one point five and two million dollars. So, this is significant investment that self signaling anticipates making and they wanna be sure that it's designed correctly and satisfies your requirements. Before Craig explains self signaling's needs, I'd just like to say that self signaling and the planning board, the town of Manchester, I think, share goals and objectives in all respects. No business wants to develop a site with insufficient parking. It would make no economic sense to be investing the kind of money that self signaling is going to be investing in this forty acre project with insufficient parking. And obviously, the town wants sufficient parking. Secondly, we wanna make sure that it's safe and I'm sure the town does too. Lastly, both self signaling and the town, as I just read, are interested in assuring minimal environmental impact. And I think that after you've heard from Mark and Craig, you'll appreciate the effort that we've made in that regard. So, at this point, I guess I'd, I'd like Craig to explain self signaling's plans. It's a phased project and what the anticipated parking requirements may be. Ultimately, in addition to dealing with the size of spaces, the bylaw provides that for a use without specified parking requirements, and currently the bylaw doesn't specify the precise requirements for this life sciences project, the building inspector is to make that determination with the advice of the planning board. So, that's the second reason why we're here tonight, so that you can ultimately advise Paul Orlando as to what you think would be the appropriate number of parking spaces for our use. So with that-
Can I just ask a question on that? I think, doesn't our bylaw have commercial uses as a, so this is sort of a high, and, and,
No, uh-
and you're proposing just a, fewer than, it's, it's a four spaces per, it's, it's a per square foot requirement, I believe. And so I think you're proposing fewer spaces than if you were to do that calculus.
Uh, I don't know what section, I'm looking at the-
Section five.
Uh, new bylaw and I don't know what section-
It would be, it would act, we didn't change it, it's the section five.
I don't know, it says laboratory uses the plan.
It doesn't say.
Near, near as I can see, there's nothing in the list of commercial uses that would be applicable.
Okay.
There are business or professional offices, but unlike other neighboring communities that provide for research and laboratories and life sciences, there is no specified requirement that I could find.
All right, I stand corrected.
Okay. Okay. All right, so I've shared the presentation, you should be able to see that there. And what I thought might be helpful, obviously we'll jump in, we'll talk more specifically about what our parking requirements are, based upon our growth needs and otherwise. So it'd be helpful to give a little bit of background and reminder about kind of what, how the Manchester site fits into the rest of our program. Because I think that will help understand how the growth of that site impacts our overall business. So, with the addition of the site on Outwater Avenue, we now have three sites here on the North Shore. The one in Danvers is primarily focused on our R and D and corporate headquarters, while the one in Beverly is primarily a manufacturing site. And the idea is that with the campus in Manchester, that's gonna allow us to primarily focus that on the expansion of our R and D capabilities as well as corporate functions. And over time, balance the growth between these three sites. Now, last year we purchased the property, we've engaged with architects as well as other, you know, engineers, I can quote Mark here, who talks about young designs, garages as well. This year, we're focused on obviously site planning, building, design permitting and we're hoping to do, start site development and construction next year that would enable us to be moving into phase one of the program approximately three years from now. Due to, I would say, management of our costs as well as management of our overall growth, we are planning a two phased approach to the, to the campus in Manchester. With phase one, again, focused primarily on enabling us to grow our R and D capabilities. At that point, and many of the initial employees that would occupy Manchester in a few years, most of them would come from the site that's currently occupied in Danvers, while a small number would come from our Tozer site in Beverly as well. And that would serve as the initial group of people that would occupy the new site in phase one. And then over time, it would enable us to grow. Phase two would come about at a later date depending upon, you know, how the company is growing and what our, you know, financial needs are. But then phase two would come later and that would allow the continued expansion of R and D as well as the other sites as well. So we're hoping to see them grow, you know, sort of together, you know, over time in a balanced way. So, this, this line here is a overall summary of how we're calculating our parking requirements in terms of the total numbers of sites that we're planning for the phase one construction. The table on the left-hand side summarizes the number of employees that we anticipate in various functions in the company over a ten plus year period. And so this is essentially looking at what we can consider to be the full capacity of what phase one would be. And we've broken those different categories into different types of seating as well. Those people who primarily work in the lab or supervise people in the lab or lab support and then office functions, because there's a slightly different seating need for those. People who are working in the lab or being supervised, people working in the lab or support staff, the expectation is they're onsite virtually every day, they have a permanent seat and, you know, would be a one-to-one ratio of employees to seating. The office people though, it's a little bit different. We all know, as a result of the pandemic, many companies, including CST, for many of these workers went to a- went to a either offsite in the beginning or more hybrid function now. And we're continuing to do that to varying degrees, and we anticipate continuing to do that in the future as well. And so, right now, we anticipate a 70% metric that we're using here, meaning that if we have in this case, a planned capacity of say 148 people, we anticipate only needing 70% of the number of seats for that, which would be say 104 here. So what it means is that for a capacity of phase one of people associated with the site or working out of the site, say 280, the number of seats that we would be building out would only be 236. And that would adequately support the number of employees working out of the site, again, due to the hybrid feature of many of our employees in the workforce. In addition, CST does strongly encourage and reward things like carpooling, as well as biking, so it further certainly reduces amount of traffic, as well as parking needs. And at any given time, you anticipate people are either having paid time off or vacation, sick time or work travel, et cetera. So at any given time, you're never going to expect all those people to be there. So with that said then, how we are planning the parking needs based upon that is a garage parking to meet the needs of all the employees, or all the employees that for full capacity of phase one, which would be 236 spots, as well as additional spots outside of the garage that include visitor parking up near the garage when you would come up to it on the south entrance road, parking along the back entrance or the north loop road, about 16. And as you've heard in the past, I think, we are planning a small parking lot at the trailhead that would allow the public to come in and park the cars and go up into the trailhead as well. So there'd be an additional 18 spots there. Now, this would more than meet the needs of phase one. And while an expansion of the garage for phase two would be planned, those additional spaces outside the garage would not be expanded. These are being planned to meet the needs of both phase one and two. So the garage would meet the expanded needs of phase two in the future, based upon. And just for reference, when I was looking at the number of parking spots that we have at our Danvers facility on Trias Lane, and the number of employees that are working out of there, we actually have 380 employees working out of our Danvers site, with only 334 spots. And on any given day, there are large numbers of empty spots there. And that's because a significant portion of those people working aren't that hybrid. And any given day, they're just not there, while obviously all the lab workers are there. So we know from our other sites now, that the numbers we're planning for an Outwater Avenue are more than sufficient to meet those needs. And we also have flexibility, because as we move then to our phase two, now this gets a little bit more speculative. This is a, I would say preliminary program for headcount and different functions for phase two into the future. Built out in the same way, where we have the different activities, it's a mix between laboratory and office. And applying similar types of logic, we go from having, you know, almost say 330 employees that may be associated with that phase, but a parking requirement to slightly less than 250 would be accommodated by the expansion of the garage. Now, this will obviously evolve with time as the needs of the company change, as we grow, and as we balance these functions between our three sites as well. But we feel like we have a plan based upon the needs of the company, and the logic for what, you know, how we actually use it, and it's not strictly based upon a square footage. You know, it just makes a lot more sense. And I think we certainly aren't going to have an issue of not having enough parking needs on current calculations.
Does self signaling have a return to office policy?
We do not have a formal policy that is, it varies by certain functions. There are certain functions that we are having people to be onsite a certain amount of time. But at this point, we do not have an across-the-board policy of requiring everyone to be onsite for a certain amount of time.
Does the R and D part mandate that you be in the office? Or is that something that can be flexed?
The R and D piece is, well, including say manufacturing, warehousing, things like that, support staff, lab ops, facilities, all of them. These employees are basically onsite every day. There were demands that they could really want to do it onsite. There are certain things they can do, you know, at home, but for the most part, these people are onsite every day.
So if I may at this point, obviously, we can provide any additional information you need with respect to parking requirements. Mark Stonier is going to talk about the size and geometry of the parking spaces. Your new bylaw specifies that two-thirds of the parking spaces are to be nine by 18, and one-third, eight by 16. And your bylaw doesn't appear to contemplate structured parking. So I think that Mark, whose company specializes in building parking garages, can explain, as he did in the letter that we provided to the board, how they've determined the size of the parking spaces that deviates slightly from what the town of Manchester requires.
I'm going to stop sharing and let me get to that again.
That's fine.
So as I understand it, everybody has had an opportunity to, received an opportunity to read our letter. Walker's Consultants, we're architectural engineering consulting firm nationwide that specializes in parking design and consulting. And as part of our experience, what we do is industry research and studies to track vehicle sales over the course of annually, year over year, and to anticipate changes in both the needs of customers, clients, as well as the changes in parking geometrics. Our goal is not to overbuild parking, not to underbuild parking, make sure everything is right sized. And we also put a high emphasis on the functionality or usability of a facility. In our memorandum, we described this as our level of service, and we use this similar to a transportation grading system. A being very good, D being poor, or generally low. We don't use F, that would be not functional. The town bylaws, we recommend or require a nine by 18 standard stall for at least two-thirds of the provided parking, with an eight by 16 foot small car or compact car for up to 33% of the vehicles. And what our research has found is that the small car, however that may be defined, has been shrinking over this last, no, 15 years or more, based on the last 11 years of sale, vehicle sales. So what used to be more predominant on the roads is grown more and more to what we see as a crossover or an SUV. Where so requesting 33% of stalls and structured parking really doesn't meet the needs of the vehicles on the roads today. And it actually hinders or requires more parking to be built. The reason for that is if we build 33% smaller compact stalls, but there's only less than 15% of small cars on the road today, there's no governance to who will park in those small cars spaces. I think we've all seen them in garages, where you see an SUV taking up two lanes. And what that generally does is takes your effective parking supply and makes it smaller. So where we're looking to provide about 236 spaces within the structure, if we were to provide 236 with 33% of them being small cars, the actualized or effective supply would be much less than that. And we would start to see vehicles either circle in the facility or parking out on the surface parking, which is being dedicated to other better uses such as the public. So what we would recommend at Walker is a one-size-fits-all approach. Our recommendation, based on our level of service guidance, is for employee use is a level of service C. That's ideal for non-high turnover, low turnover use, such as office use, where you have familiar parkers coming in in the morning, they're there for six to eight hours a day, and they're, you know, they're leaving the structure all at the same time. Their current guidelines, nine by 18, is great for, that's what we would term as a level of service A. That's fantastic for surface parking with high turnover, such as entertainment, retail, other uses maybe such as institutional or hospital use. However, it's a little bit more than what's needed in this application with primarily employee parking. So our recommendation, we'd like to recommend use of an eight foot six by 18 foot stall. Again, that's a level of service C, and we think that would be more than adequate to provide for the proposed user group for this facility. In addition, we have our parking module, which is the length of the stall plus the, two stalls plus the aisle. National Parking Association recommends with an eight foot six stall, at least a 58 and a half foot wide parking module. We're providing a 60 foot wide module. So while our spaces are narrower, we're maintaining a higher level of service because maneuverability in and out of those stalls will be easier. It also allows you to, a little bit more generous drive aisles, so you don't have tighter spaces on the two-way traffic.
That's, I think that's, I think that's good. To deviate from the parking requirements, the new bylaw requires a special permit from the planning board. So if you provide guidance that would suggest that you would be open to that, then part of our filing package, in addition to everything else, would be a special permit request to allow for the parking spaces to be sized as Mark just described.
Any plans in a structured situation for charging stations? That would, and is it more difficult in a structured thing than in an outdoor environment? Is that a consideration for structured parking?
We are considering a fairly high number of electric vehicle charging stations within the footprint of the structure. Generally, that's not, doesn't, what we see today is not a significant change in the spaces. The stall with a level of service actually provides, you know, is anticipating to find about one foot buffer between the vehicles to allow for doorswng, egress and ingress out of the vehicles. So we find that that's a fairly comfortable amount space. The charging equipment is typically installed at the head of the stall, right on the stripe, and then you've got the vehicles coming in. We also designed for what we call the 85th percentile vehicle. So while we think, we say level of service C, we're designing for the 85% of all vehicles on the road. So that larger 85% vehicle will be, you know, right now it's a Chevy Traverse, Buick Enclave size. So that's a pretty, you know, large, medium and large crossover. Larger vehicles would have a little bit more time, but everything, the other 84% are smaller vehicles. So we start to have a little bit more cushion when we see that the smaller vehicles are still a heavy portion of what's on the road. In surface lots, we would recommend a little bit more space. We also provide more space accessible, accessible charging stations. There we do provide, in addition to the access aisle, a clearer accessible path to the operable equipment as well. So those do have special considerations that we do comply with.
Questions from the board or comments? Lauren?
I can start, sure. Thank you for the very helpful presentation. So I have a few questions, maybe I can just ask them, and then you can answer them in whatever role makes sense. I'd be curious about the spatial difference, the footprint for instance, between what Manchester would legislate versus what you're proposing. So if it actually results in a smaller footprint of the garage? Have you done that math yet, or?
We haven't, we haven't run that number out exactly. We did do an initial layout with the nine foot wide stalls, and I believe they're within the same footprint of the structure, there was a 20 stall difference. So if you think that each space right now, if I was going to look at inefficiencies, about 350 square foot per stall, we're building another 60,000 square feet of structure. So that's what we hope to avoid.
Right, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think the goal is a good one to, with the amount of concrete and, you know, site disturbance and overall size of the garage to achieve the most efficient garage. I certainly think that in structured parking, compact spaces are challenging, particularly when they're at 90 degrees, they're challenging. So the other question, so I mean, I kind of, I kind of take what you're saying at face value in terms of the efficiency of all standardized spaces and a more efficient size of space versus the nine by 18 that Manchester requires. We're certainly not parking engineers, and I know that Walker is, you know, well-known in the industry for that kind of work that you do. So my other questions are related to maybe some of the other uses of the garage. For example, EV parking, you said the chargers can go in the standard-sized stalls. Are you allowing for future growth of the EV chargers? So just a couple of examples there are the infrastructure that might be required to enable the, you know, to enable the EV chargers on day one. By parking the garage at MIT, a certain, a small number of charger spaces are assigned, and there's an expectation that you're going to move out of those spaces partway during the day, so then you need another space to move into, and that can sometimes be a problem. But I think if, given your sustainability mission at CST, you're thinking about what's the long-term growth of electric vehicles and really enabling that plug-in might factor. I don't know whether that reduces the spaces or increases them, but you know, some flexibility in that design.
So CST's initiative for electric vehicle charging far exceeds any others that we find that we're currently working with. We are proposing upwards of 40% of the vehicles on day one, and then expanding to, I believe, its total 20% of the future expansion, with provisions within the structure to accommodate the panel sizes, the infrastructure needed. So it's even what we would term as EV-ready for expansion.
Okay.
The 20% exceeds, there are some jurisdictions which want more, but it actually exceeds what Walker is recommending right now for the 10-year outlook for EV parking. As well as at that level of capacity, the electrical service and the panel, the electrical gear is more than adequate to support an entire facility with electric vehicle charging capabilities, especially at an office use, where people are parking for eight hours a day. So what we're going to introduce is a power management system where once, not everybody's charging at 100%, so we don't have that high peak demand. But you charge, you arrive at seven o'clock, eight o'clock, and it charges you at, you know, 30% or 40% throughout the day. And we're able to spread that load, that electrical service out amongst workspaces.
Does that mean that you don't need to require the movement of spaces, like off the EV charger? And is there an efficiency in the way your spaces are managed because of that?
Yeah, so the charging equipment would be able to manage, we use it, we typically use a four-to-one ratio, and this power, this power management module monitors four spaces. So if one space is full, it turns off the power and is charging the other ones at a higher rate. No need to move the vehicle.
I could totally say from the standpoint of just convenience, we do not want to have to have employees, you know, moving cars around, waiting, something like that. That is absolutely, this has got to be a complainer, plug-in and management. That is the way.
And the infrastructure rooms, the electrical rooms and all of that are sized for future expansion of that capacity?
They will be, yeah. We're right now at the conceptual phase, and so we're doing a lot of that programming right now, but we have the ample support in the ground here for that support.
Okay, great. And then, you didn't mention it today, but for bike parking, is the expectation that the bike parking is in the building, or is it in a secure cage in the garage? And if it is in the garage, are you factoring that into the layout as well?
I'm not familiar with all the details. We are definitely planning, you know, my sister parking, you can know that about that. And I, you know, it would be certainly secure, and I'd really covered, but I don't know where it would be located. But we're absolutely planning for my sister parking at this part of the building, you know, to support bicyclists as part of our, we're looking at LEED programming as well, which involves that. I don't have the details.
Right, yeah, it's certainly required by LEED. And as a cyclist who's parked in a lot of cages, I think that secured and covered parking is really important for, to encourage cycling as well. So if that isn't going to be, if you don't want the bikes in the building, in the lab building.
No, we're not, we're not, certainly not going to have them in the building.
Yeah, think about, think about setting aside.
And we will be able to provide. We will be able to provide, certainly detailed on that coming up as well.
Okay, right, because that, that would obviously take up some parking spaces. Okay, I think that's all I've got for the moment, thank you.
Anyone else?
Actually, I have a question. So the one, the one thing we're not sure of is how many people are actually going to come and park. And I think there's, however, you've got a two phases. So assuming there's enough time between the two phases, you can make the second phase of the garage bigger if needed. And I suppose you could even temporarily have people park where the new garage is going to be built, if there's an overflow.
Yeah, I. When we get to the point when we're certainly designing for phase two, we'll have more knowledge and experience about both how the parking situation is working in phase one and what our needs are going forward. So and we'll have, we believe we have, say, some flexibility in terms of what size we'll need to, we'll be able to build for phase two as well. I, I don't anticipate based upon what we're, you know, planning for phase one, that we're going to have, that we're going to reach a point prior to that of not having sufficient parking. And we wouldn't allow that, probably, I mean, again, we have the three sites in the area and we can, you know, balance our growth appropriately based upon that too, so that doesn't happen.
And I assume your lab technicians aren't driving pickups?
Not generally. And I think that's what, you know, Mark was talking about, that fifteenth percentile that wouldn't work as well. I, you know, I think for most people who are driving to work or commuting, they tend to, you know, be more in that eighty-fifth percentile. And I think certainly our employees do too. We don't see too many of those extra, you know, large vehicles in our parking lot.
So one, one thing I'd recommend when you bring in the special, special permit application to give us as much data about your existing parking at your other facilities, because that's a model we can.
Sure.
And other garage layouts that are, that we can see work with those dimensions, I think that would be helpful also.
There are some, some unknowns. The existing site on Trask Lane is on Route 128 and it's less easily accessed from public transportation than this site will be. It's less bicycle-friendly than this site will be. So that there are some variables that are going to probably help CST. But the numbers that Craig was referring to are based on Trask Lane.
Does the structured parking situation lead to less runoff of oil? No, as Mr. Aldley.
Absolutely well, absolutely well.
It's more environmentally friendly.
Yeah, there's a significant cost, but we're building a lot, you know, our impertinent area footprint is much, will be smaller for the equivalent number of spaces.
What we are not planning to add is, as I pointed out, additional surface parking beyond what I think we're doing for phase one. That would be all the surface parking from phase one to the additional parking would be the extension of the garage.
Is there any public access to the EV chargers?
So currently, right now, our sites, it is public accessible and these would likely be as well in the garage. I mean, we're not, at this point, planning to have, let's say, security, you know, with the going in and out of the garage. I mean, at this point, that is not the plan. We currently offer, it's publicly accessible and I anticipate that this would probably likely be the case here as well.
Anything else from the board?
I have one last question. Shuttle service, are you thinking about commuting, commuting by transit and how would you address that?
We, so we used to be involved, and I can't remember, you know, the name, we were involved in the, that shuttle service that went from the train station and all that and we found there was very little use of that. But it is something we, you plan to look into again as well.
So at this point, you're not making any assumptions about that for the parking though?
Not, not specifically, no, not, you know, not far calculation. I mean, we will certainly do everything we can to encourage and support the use of that.
I have a question.
Christina?
Just based on the numbers and the cars that you have, this is actual parking, does this incorporate egress at all? Do you look to, are there necessary for a second means of egress or are you confident in outwater road?
I mean, right now, yeah, Atwater Road is the only thing, you know, coming onto the, to the broader site. I mean, there is definitely a loop road running all the way around that. So there's going to be more than one, like, in out, around facility, broader facility as well. But in terms of finding from the out, I don't think that's the.
So were you looking for a sense from us right now on what? Well, you, you can give us the sense after the meeting. We don't need an immediate response from you. You, you may want to discuss what we've presented tonight. You may have additional questions for us before you come to a conclusion. But we would like to know sooner than later whether or not the parking space size that Mark has described would be acceptable. And we think that we can convince you that, that our parking count is rational and that ultimately you'll be able to tell Orlando that you think his conclusion makes sense. So what we'll probably do is submit a request to Paul to approve a certain ratio of parking for this use. Paul will then ask the planning board for a recommendation. So that, that probably won't happen for a little bit, but that's, so there's a little time.
Be an excuse to get Paul in here.
So we can address.
That's why I said the board.
For one of the board.
Take Paul away.
Can we address the last part of Betsy's, I'll play the report about the site plan and our corrections to our bylaw? Can we hear this first person firsthand?
Sure.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
I did, I raised the question.
Just one second, just before you start, Betsy, you had your hand up. Was there a comment you wanted to make? You're, you're muted. Betsy, you're muted.
Um, I just had a question on what the total square footage of building area was going to be for cell signaling.
So the, the phase one, the square footage of the building, including our atrium, is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand square feet.
So is that the, the total square feet? Given the phase, I thought there were a couple of phases.
Yeah, that would be just phase one. So in phase two would be approximately, say, a hundred and twenty thousand. So it would be about, say, between two forty to two fifty total for phase one and two.
Similar question, the square, gross square feet of the parking garage is, as you've proposed with those size?
Rough calculation just now, about ninety-seven thousand square feet total, about twenty-one.
For phase one?
For phase one, about twenty-one thousand square foot, floor, footprint.
Did you say ninety-seven thousand?
Twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand.
Yeah, and about four and a half levels.
How high is that?
It's about ten and a half foot, floor to floor, so about forty-four feet, forty-three feet.
Okay, and. You're proposing, just to make sure I get this straight, you're proposing slightly larger modifications to our, to our regulations. If you were to follow our regulations, the T, I think Laura asked this, you would actually be, if, for the same number of spaces, forget the far, the fact that, you know, the F-150 parking in a compact space is going to take up two of them, put that aside. So if you were to follow the size of our spaces, you would actually buil, build a smaller footprint. Am I correct? Am I understanding that?
I have to confirm that. We originally did this, the initial design concept off of all nine-foot stalls and it required about sixty to seventy thousand square feet more space than what we're currently proposing. We didn't run the same analysis with thirty-three percent small car stalls, but we can look into that.
I guess my point in, in that, that analysis, it would be helpful to me anyway, to understand that you feel so, that you feel strongly that for the utility of your, your employees and your use, that you're going to need to, to buy, you know, have, whether it's five, ten, twenty thousand more square feet of garage and every square foot is money. You don't even have to tell us what it, how much, but you're, you're costing yourselves something in order to provide that additional size space is, I guess, what I mean.
Well, aren't they asking for the same number of spaces? You're asking for a relief dimensionally.
Right.
But if you, but if you were to require the combination of two-thirds, one-third, you might also ask for a relief or you might change the quantitative, the number of spaces because you would need more because of that discount that you're saying the, the compact spaces require. The, the lack of efficiency, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to make the argument that this is, this makes sense for the company and you're willing to pay for it. If, if that is the case, you know, and, or maybe it's create, then the flip side of that is if this relief from our, from our size is actually causing you to have, build a slightly smaller garage, I'm not opposed to that either, even if it saves you money, there's less embodied carbon, you know, those kinds of things, that's fine too. But, you know, I, I think it'd be helpful just to know that.
Yeah, and I think the smaller footprint, smaller volume of concrete, you know, if there's a way, if you're going to CM and they can kind of calculate that to show the savings, the embodied carbon savings. I mean, a reason to do this is efficiency, but another reason to do this is it's the more sustainable thing to do. And that's a reason to consider relief of parking dimensions, which are apparently more geared towards surface parking than they are to structured parking because we haven't had structures.
And one other.
Thank you for putting the arguments forward.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I, you know, I want to reduce the size of this thing.
And then the, I guess the last piece of that, and I don't know if you ever do this, but, you know, are there, is it possible to have the top floor have a, a floor, smaller floor-to-floor height, again, to reduce its mass, reduce its height, reduce. You're the parking experts and, and that would be, that's just a question that you can think about and.
It's in the top floor.
The top floor opener.
Well, maybe it's the, the next to top floor, whatever it is, something.
Right now, we're, we're using some of the smaller floor-to-floor heights that we can and still have accessible vehicle access in it. So we're proposing a ten-foot-six floor-to-floor and that right there allows us seven foot clear with some tolerance mechanical systems within the garage. And even then, van accessible parking requiring eight foot two clear would either have to be on the ground here or on the top tier. Where we don't have the height restriction. So we're, we're already trying to, the, the structure height minimum.
You're thought of, you're thought about, yeah.
But there are other sustainable features that we're looking into as well. We're looking into eventually a PV solar array on the roof of the structure. Now, likely with phase two, just to do constructibility and logistic.
And a different cement contact.
We've done on parking, Christina had a question on, do you have a question?
Oh, the, and I think Mark was going to address it, the last line of our planner's report talked about the filing the application and the errors in our zoning bylaw, so.
Right. Actually, I've been spending a lot of time with zoning bylaw in preparation for filing the application and I noticed immediately that the index doesn't correspond with the new bylaw. And then when I was looking for the site plan review sections and the new performance standards, I couldn't find them. And so there, there are sections that, and this is the posted version on the town's website, doesn't seem to be complete. And so obviously we need to make sure that we understand what we're using for bylaw.
Yeah, it's a work in progress.
Working on it, I don't know, Betsy, any update on that?
I have a motion for that, right? Well, I just heard that unofficially affected my housing.
I think it's affecting.
So it looks like we're going to have a new meeting. So I think we need to get our priorities to get this to the next town meeting. So whatever we need to agree to get this correct quickly.
I agree.
For all of our sake, but for you too. So I think we need to prioritize our efforts.
Well, right now, if we filed, we wouldn't have to do site plan review.
Well, apparently we can just say no to anything, so, doesn't matter what the site plan says, per Chris only, we can just say no, right, Chris?
Say no.
Just say no.
Yeah.
No, but yes.
All right, Betsy, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, if you look at my staff memo, number five addresses some of the items that are missing in zoning. And I've also gone through the whole document with, in pretty much a lot of detail. And I suggest that the group that worked on zoning worked with KP Law on tracking the revisions and making the amendments. My understanding is that there may be a special town meeting in June, so that would be the time to do it.
We should discuss that piece after cell signaling is done.
Yeah, so, okay, I think, I appreciate you guys coming in. Well, when you say sooner or later.
So do you want like some, if we don't do verbal, do you want some written feedback or?
Whenever you prefer. But as I said, we were hoping to file in June.
So we can put it on our next meeting, can have Paul Orlando come in and talk about it ourselves.
That would be great. We'd, we'd be happy to come back if you'd like us to attend, just let us know.
Okay.
And I guess the one thing that does concern me is if the, if, if we can assume that the omission from the posted bylaw was inadvertent and that the old site plan review provisions are still part of the bylaw, then we could actually file our applications as we intended to do in June. But if, if you're saying that you may need to have a special town meeting and revise the bylaw, that would mean that our schedule would be significantly affected because, as you know, bylaw changes need to be approved by the Attorney General. So there's a, a big delay and we wouldn't probably, if you approved it at a town meeting in June, it would probably be the fall before we could file an application.
It's got to be public, not only Attorney General group, but then published.
Right.
Two steps there.
Exactly.
So let me just clarify. The town clerk and I reviewed the bylaw from November and there were a number of issues. And I've gone through it again and found about thirty-five or six areas where the references were not correct. So in addition to the issues I brought up in my memo tonight, there were a number of references that just either weren't there or were inaccurate. So somebody didn't do the cross-check when the numbering was done in twenty-twenty-one and then subsequent work that was done last fall.
Well, this was based on all of, all the articles getting passed, wasn't it? The numbering, I, I don't.
The numbering was done in twenty, fall of twenty-twenty-one.
All right, how are we going to fix it?
The problem is, we voted in all of section six, so it's, we're going to have to vote it back in again.
Yeah.
So that, well, so you're, it's, it's a pickle.
So what's the process moving forward from the board here? What, what is the suggestion on getting this going?
To me, I think, I mean, not, not anything against you guys, but Mary, you have a really detailed spreadsheet. You've given these numbers over and these details over and over again. You need to be the point person for these changes because you've done it like three times. I can't imagine why you're not pulling your hair out at this point because you screamed from the mountains, these are what need to be changed and they don't get done. So I get it, but I feel like this needs a fresh set of eyes and I think Mary needs to be this. She's been the one that keeps bringing them up over and over again. Maybe you need you two to split it, but Mary needs to get involved with this and make sure it gets done correctly.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that the planning board hire a temporary clerical worker for the purpose of proofreading, formatting and cross-checking the proposed rules and regulation document and the zoning bylaws, including what was.
Mary's done it.
But, but Mary shouldn't have to keep doing.
But the clerical person doesn't know the background and they're not going to have the history.
Maybe the clerical person works in conjunction with.
They could, they, they could prove this also. But there's no reason why all of us should spend hours and hours.
But is the clerical person going to mind how I do it?
And that could be fine, the problem is, is to Christine's point, and that's very kind of you to say all of this, but, um, and this, you poor guys are sitting here listening to this, the problem is, is we have given changes and then they don't happen. So, I mean, it could just be the same scenario again. I don't know what the sequence of events is.
I don't know what the sequence of events is to to properly change these, so I think we probably so without you guys having to listen to this, have to figure out the steps.
My understanding is that the site plan review procedures were in the by law and were never revoked. So they they just were unintentionally omitted from the published version, in my view.
Well, I think, and and we'll have to dig deeper, but what was voted in at the last town meeting was removing section six and replacing it with a section six. And site plan is in section six and whatever got replaced did not include it.
I think the only thing that's missing is when is when site plan is applicable. It's like a paragraph in the old one.
The six point five.
Well, you used to have a provision that said if you have a a project with five or fewer places, parking spaces, or.
Right. That's when it's applicable.
Or more than five.
Thanks, right.
Laura.
It was all deleted.
I mean, just like that.
So it seems to me it's a number of clerical errors rather than intent. And um, whether it's a um, clerk that's hired or someone from KP Law, I think a person who's familiar with the legal requirements of the zoning
Do we hire them into it?
Should be, should be hired to do this, it should be a hired person whose job this is to do this efficiently and quickly, to eliminate typos and to do the cross references. I don't think there's an intent of deleting site plan review here.
Well, but no, there there wasn't, but the problem is we voted it in at town meeting, so we need to do another vote at town meeting to add it back.
Agreed. We can do that, but I think to get all these admissions and errors taken care of efficiently.
So the problem then, Laura, is that Mary's gonna have to tell the same person and give the same information that she's already given someone three times, so.
Well, the the problem is that somebody's just gonna start from scratch and recreate the wheel and so.
And I don't, I think they're gonna need a history, they're not gonna be able to just look at this and understand it.
I know.
Maybe they'll go under your direction. You know, uh, you know, you can get yourself from the, you know, check this section to this.
So we need, Betsy has given us a memo of the changes that need to be done. One of which is the applicability of site plan review, which if we, to Mark's question, if we, it seems to me that if we took language that we knew had passed AG's review, just put back in exactly what we had before and get it reviewed by council and make sure that, you know, maybe we can, that that seems like a reasonable thing. And then perhaps we can have an agreement with the applicant that it's, that that's the working um, document or something.
So let let me just, let me just, just for processing, I know you've made a motion and um, kind of got diverted and it really should be seconded and then have this discussion.
Let's have a second here.
So could you repeat the motion, just to hire a clerk?
I move.
On the please paper I passed out.
That the planning board hire a temporary clerical worker for the purpose of proofreading, formatting, and cross checking the proposed rules and regulations document and the zoning bylaws. The purpose of my motion is to allow the town planner time to work on the substantive work of the planning board and to get these important documents finalized and posted in correct form on the town website.
Okay, so we've heard the motion.
So all seconded for the purposes are going to discussion.
Okay, so Mark, we may second, now we can have a discussion and Betsy, do you want to start it off? You have your hand up on this.
Can somebody explain to me, who has been doing this for decades, how a clerical person is going to understand the intent of what the planning board's mission was when they were voting all the articles back for the last several years? And I have caught a number of these, as has Mary, and a clerical worker is not going to um, find this information. I have suggested in my memo that KP Law, the two or three people that were involved in the zoning changes back from two thousand and eighteen on because that's when the issue came up, um, work with KP Law on this issue. You do not need a clerical worker.
It could be a cl- a law clerk or something.
And you come here.
No, uh, no, a law clerk is not going to do it. You need to get an attorney from KP Law to sit down.
So these are not just clerical changes, is what what we're we're starting to find out.
And so my point is, is that Mary was very detailed and had these changes, and I think Mary should be the point person going forward. I think there needs to be a fresh set of eyes, and Mary's been the detailed person with the clerk and the minutes and listed these changes over and over again. Mary needs to take the lead on this and work with town council and get this done and get it correct.
Um, can, I'd like to suggest, I haven't had a chance to get to read Mary, um, Betsy's memo thoroughly, my my mistake there. Um, I think that the issue is that many of the issues are in the sections that we did not change and they are the references to the sections we, that we renumbered. So it's the renumber.
Well, this does not, it does not exist, this does not exist.
Well, it doesn't exist because we change that, you know, uh, administration is now twelve. So so if it was.
Mary, what's these out there? I'm just saying.
Some of them were brought up, not all of them, and we are where we are. Um, and I agree that Mary should absolutely be involved in it, she has a good read and she understands this whole thing.
If I, if I may.
Yeah.
Timing, uh, it is extremely important to cell sign for lots of reasons. It it's conceivable that we could file an application based on what is currently existing and also on what ought to be existing.
Yeah.
So the the planning board reviews everything on the proper basis. Technically, the site plan review stuff would be voluntary, but we would be more than willing to volunteer. We're gonna conform to your new performance standards. Everything will be done the way we know you want it to be done. So I I think if we could file.
Legal to file on something that doesn't exist?
I think, well, no, we're we're filing on the basis of what exists, but we're also putting ourselves at the mercy of the board with respect to this other stuff. And I think if you could discuss with KP Law uh, the feasibility of our filing an application in June, uh, that certainly would beat the fall of two thousand twenty-three, which would uh, be extremely costly and challenging for cell signal.
So why don't I make a motion then?
We have a motion on the table.
Okay.
Sorry.
How about I'll withdraw my motion?
Okay, motion withdrawn, uh, or any other motions I would entertain? Who's gonna amend your motion, but?
Well, I was, I was gonna say that we um, it's not necessarily a motion, but that we deal with the rena- that the, with the the numbering issues and the site plan review applicability at the presumed to June town meeting and that we set the pub, that we work to set the public hearing date even before our next meeting. And at our next meeting, um, uh, Chris and Mary and I and Betsy propose the changes, we may have to have a couple working, a working meeting in there too.
I think these need to be public working meetings.
Absolutely. I just.
Laura.
I'd like to put a plug in for signing this to KP Law, we have money for lawyers to do this. Certainly take Mary's list of comments that you've been collecting over all this time.
We have to, yeah.
I would, and we not take this off the list.
We want our, we want our money back.
Honey, may I finish my point, please, may I finish my point without being interrupted? Thank you. That we um, that we take Mary's long list of three years of documented changes and that we give that to the lawyer and I'm happy to, you know, have people take a look at it, but I don't think this ought to peel off into another subcommittee right now, time is of the essence here for all the things that we need to do, and these are clerical changes and cross references that we should not be spending our time in these planning board meetings trying to get through it, we have enough to do. So that is my recommendation to hire a lawyer per Betsy's uh, recommendation and follow that line with the input of Mary's collected changes.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Um, KP Law's already reviewed these and this is where we are, so I would not go down the same path again. My recommendation.
Well, what if we give them very specific instructions and explain what the problem is? Then I'm not sure we need them. If we, if we're gonna document it.
You need KP Law.
If we're gonna document it, then, you know, then we've got it, right? I'm I'm not sure what step KP Law is doing at this point, I mean, they're gonna have to review it before town meeting, but.
Betsy, has stuff come up that KP Law has not reviewed?
KP Law has not reviewed all the things that I have found. Um, KP Law was brought into the zoning changes that went through in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, kind of late to the game, um, and as I understand it, um, they weren't really involved in the zoning. So, um, and they have, um, I have been asked to work or at least start working with Jonathan Murray at KP Law to try to figure it out. The town clerk at this point has basically said, just give me a by law, I can post.
So, um, can I just clarify one thing? I think what KP Law was asked to review the articles, which is different than the um, entire zoning in its entirety with its numbering in those articles.
And cross referencing.
Those cross referencing, so I think having them, um, and they are familiar with our zoning bylaws and they are our town council, so it seems to me that it makes all the sense in the world. And I would add to Laura's motion, um, that we, they prepare the articles for town meeting um, in, you know, the renumbering and particularly with a focus on renumbering and site plan review. We're not gonna try to take up exclusionary zoning and whatever else, um.
Do we think they can do that in two weeks? Because we would kind of need a document in front of us to.
Let's ask them. Well, I think we can have, set the public hearing and staff to do it at the time that we give them. Yeah. Yeah, let's, let's ask them.
Is that what we, is that what we want?
And so do you have these funds available, we just have unlimited taxpayer funds to do this?
We have funds for legal counsel when we need it, is what we've been told.
Well, we already paid someone over fifty thousand dollars to do this, right?
Well, this is uh, legal, uh, legal, um.
Well, that's a good question, I think there's some, a bunch of money left over, you know.
Crossing eyes and dodging G's for vice versa. Yeah.
That is.
And so the memo also referenced Bobrowski, which I thought at the last meeting, we agreed that we were not going to go down that path. So I'd like some clarification on who we're gonna use to finish this up.
I don't think we should use Bobrowski.
No.
I think we're done with Bobrowski.
So can we make this a motion because I don't really want to see this again, if we, if this is what we agree as a group?
I'll make a motion that we not use Bobrowski to finish this task.
I'll second.
You have Laura's motion on the floor, but anyway.
Yeah, let's start, let's start with the motion from Laura.
Yeah.
And that, was that seconded?
Yes, Rich Kristen seconded.
Any further discussion on getting KP, so I guess this went off, it went down the.
So my question is, do we have money?
Down the, right, so this went down. So let's make the motion, provided that there are funds available, that we move forward with this.
I mean, this bill could get very big, so are we saying that with unlimited, what is the, what's the amount of money?
Let's talk to the town administrator about that.
Yeah.
Betsy, can we get an idea of what what's involved in hours or cost or?
I'll talk with Greg tomorrow.
Okay. So to that motion with the parlor area finding out the costs, well, let's re, let's state the motion clearly again. Can you state, can you state?
Uh, move to engage KP Law, um, starting with a request of a proposal to uh, make the clerical uh, required edits to the articles. With incorporating the uh, document that Mary has collected over the past year, so we make sure to incorporate those um, corrections and any that Betsy has corrected. Uh, what else do you need?
And site plan review applicability.
And site plan review and um, we're, we need to have um, the work done in time to back up from town meeting.
Can we do track changes so we can verify easily that they've been done?
And track changes and we could ask, can we add a cap or uh, subject to available funds or something like that?
Makes, I think there's a, there's a risk to the town in terms of the um, cost of not having site plan review, so if there is a cost to do, to do this legal work, I think we need to weigh that against the risk to the town, the financial risk of not having site plan review.
Okay, so you don't want a financial clause in the motion?
I don't wanna, I don't, I think we should uh, get a proposal and get it done and ask Greg what monies we have to do this. I, I don't think we ought to rely on our volunteer time, we have a lot of other things to do.
Okay, I think it's clear, uh, second.
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 Any further discussion, otherwise we'll vote it.
I just don't understand, I thought we did have, we have peoples that they could get this done, so I'm just concerned every meeting, we have a different feeling, this is important, we're too busy doing this, our staff can do it. I'm just unsure that we said we could do it and now we can't, so, I mean, we do pay two people to support us.
I think Betsy's work is um, the basis for the KP Law, they, the work.
Betsy just said she could do it, so I'm just curious why we're paying out.
She just said we need the KP Law.
She said, yeah, she said she asked for the lawyer to help she.
She's, her memo says we she should have, we should have legal now.
I think to Laura's point, it's important that we get these by laws correct because we won't want her suffering this again in the future.
Can we move the question?
No.
Betsy, go ahead, one second, Betsy, one.
So just, I want to add one more comment. Part of the problem is, I can look at this stuff and I've come up with a, you know, a list and I'm sure Mary's come up with a list too, but you have to look at the intent of what the board wanted. So the board that was involved with some of these zoning changes is gonna have to participate.
That's my point, and you've been here since the beginning. I think for June, we want to renumber things correctly and insert site plan review applicability. I think any additional administrative section maybe, but, but, but anything larger than that, it would be unreasonable for a public hearing and I think we just need to worry about corrections. Yeah. So, um, let's get KP Law to help us out.
Can we vote on?
Yeah, can we vote on Laura's motion?
Okay, so motion seconded, any further discussion, otherwise we'll take a vote, Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Still?
Well, I was gonna make a comment.
Sorry? Did you have another comment?
Um, I mean, I'll vote this, how how I'll vote, but um, I I think it's fiduciarily responsible using KP Law for clerical. So that's my point.
But Betsy just said it's more than clerical.
Agreed, but a lot of these are, you know, reference six point five instead of seven point two and six point, you know, it's very clerical, I I don't think that's what we should be relying on town council for. That will be my vote.
Could we feed them uh, the more substantive stuff and?
Not now, not right now. So.
Okay.
To me, can I just, one other thing on KP Law to, I agree that it's clerical and maybe Mark has an opinion on this, but the, some of those changes are because we renumbered section seven to section twelve and we didn't touch section five. And somewhere in the body of section five, it remains that it says the administrative section is seven. So the renumbering of the work that we didn't do, so I'm wondering, so it there, it seems to me that there's also language in our warrant articles that says, and take any action relative thereto. So it seemed, what it should have said is, and renumber the by law, um, you know, through, where, as referent. Make these, you know, changes of the numbering as appropriate throughout the by law, but we didn't do that.
So just one last comment, the prior town planner with the town clerk, and I don't know who the town clerk was at the time, did that, the renumbering, they were saying they were doing the, the cross referencing, um, and they were doing it all. Do you remember this, it was a couple of years ago? So I'm not sure how it's as messed up as it is now, because what we voted in, you know, wasn't so huge that it would be all of these. So the town clerk must have a memo from the prior town planner of what the changes were. So it was already supposed to have been done once, I think that, you know, there's too many cooks in the kitchen at this point, so.
Exactly, hence KP Law.
It's not a cook to me.
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
Okay, we've got enough discussion on this, so um, it's Laura's motion. So, um, it's Laura's motion, we'll take a vote, Laura.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Oh, five to two again, surprise to surprise.
So the motion carries, uh, we'll move this to KP Law. Hopefully, we'll get some results.
May, may I, uh, ask one more question? It would be nice if KP Law could advise the board as to whether there is a avenue for us to file an application in June. I think there, there could be. In the current bylaw, it says that the life sciences use can be permitted in the LCD by special permit. So we would be applying for that special permit. We also know that we need a special permit for modifying parking spaces. At the same time, uh, in that same application, we'll apply for site plan approval. And, uh, based on what used to exist and what may still exist, it just may be an inadvertent, uh, deletion from the online version. But that way, if KP Law agrees, we could stay on track, file an application, uh, and then if, if you are reenacting site plan review,
You have to go back.
by the time we get to the finish line, it would probably be in place.
I think that makes all sense in the world. I think the piece that was, that fell out is the applicability when site plan applies.
But I thought site plan review applied for every special permit.
No, if it has more than five.
No, I think it's for all special permits, I think.
Let's get clarity.
I think we added in at the discretion of the board too, so.
So we need to get clarity on it.
So if, if, if KP Law, uh, could somehow opine on whether we have a way of filing, that would be great.
Betsy, can you move that forward when you talk to KP Law? Mark's question on using the old.
She said yes.
Yeah.
She said yes?
She nodded.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, guys.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Except for the rest.
You're patient. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, going forward with KP Law, if this is the way, if Ron, if you're included and Sarah and Chris and Mary, we, you're all included on the emails, gonna be an open debate. So my point earlier was, I believe, Chris, I mean, Sarah's the vice chair, so at this point, I feel like somebody needs to remove themselves from the email chain, um, with KP Law because I'm adamant that Mary needs to be forward, she's been the detail person for this.
I'm happy, I don't, I'm not on the email chain, I have.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that Mary is.
True.
So, uh.
I want you.
Just now, now that we voted this, who's gonna push this forward?
I'll, I'll be happy to work with Betsy on that, to push it forward, to make sure, you know, do the regular check-in with our staff.
All right, you've got the job.
Okay.
I do feel that the track changes were missing from the last few years and I think this is why the mistakes weren't able to be readily found. So I do, I'm adamant that we need to make sure these track changes so we can check them off as we go. They're done and see them.
Well, we.
Uncle Brown just believe in track changes, so that was marked, marked it up.
Who didn't? Um.
So isn't it just the final version that we're interested in? But I would, um.
We can't go, I mean, going back to the twenty twenty-two version.
Oh, no, 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 from this what we have right now, the list of changes that we have. We know we have a lot of lists. Can we just track change so we can say, yes, this got done, this got done easily? Instead of trying to read every line of everything to go back and find our list.
Yeah.
I think we, let's see how KP Law suggests doing it. We, we don't wanna, but yeah, I think that we need to be able to, to, to track our changes, whether it's through track changes or not.
Betsy, you have a little final comment on this? I wanna move, well, late.
So I've never seen these lists that have been generated by Mary of corrections. So could I get a copy of them?
I forwarded them to.
I have sent them to you, actually.
I forwarded them to Sarah.
I, I will send them to you again.
No, Brown.
I have, I have sent them.
Mark Bobrowski.
Nate, probably in your early days here, I will send them again. With a copy of Mary.
So who's gonna send them to me?
Mary and I will make sure that they get there.
Okay, thank you.
I would just, not to just completely beat this. I would not have KP Law look at everything on Betsy's list, um, wherever that list is 'cause there was stuff added that doesn't, doesn't need to be.
Yeah, I, you know, I would try to distill it a little bit. If you could. Okay, thank you. Um, I think we've covered this MBTA zoning, uh, update. Anybody need to talk about that?
What is it?
The one seventeen School Street decision, uh, finding, uh, the decision was in our packets. Looked fine to me, looked like it included the O and M stuff that we all, it looked like it included everything we asked for. I would take a motion to.
I had some comments.
Okay.
If I can find it. I had, I reached out to, um, Nate and Paul, um, and they didn't get back to me. But, um, we are requesting a, um, a yearly report to go to these departments, which we should, and I'm not saying we shouldn't. But there's no process in place on their end to do anything with them. So, you know, um, I think, one, we need a process. I think if we're gonna require something like this, operation and maintenance, that there's follow-through, um, but we don't have it. So I don't know if we should have it on here. And, um, there were just a couple of other things. If anybody wants to.
That, Laura?
The, um, if we're requiring an operations and maintenance manual, which I think is a good idea, and it's that manual requires testing at a, at a given interval, which will be determined by the manual, then just the act of needing to submit the report and get the qualified agent to do that report, do the, the inspection and report, I think that's eighty percent. And then we can follow along with the process. I would not put it in there because we don't yet have a way to file those reports or, of course, the DPW can probably read those reports quickly and understand them. I don't know if they have the time to do that, but I think just requiring the O and M manual and the O and M manual requiring report at a inspection and report at a given interval and the submitting of the report will do, will get the intent of what we're after.
And I agree, I mean, I'm not saying to take it out.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that's, you know, it's just pie in the sky at the moment 'cause they, they've never received them to date. So we've never required them. So I just, we or the town engineer and the building inspector have to follow through and set up processes that I know won't happen unless we make a, you know, say something.
Yeah, understood. Clearly, there's no enforcement end on this.
Well, it seems to me we could add a regulation that, um, special permit, uh, operations and maintenance manuals will be kept by the DPW and reviewed annually, um, uh, for completeness and, uh, compliance with the intent of the special permit. And where there's no, where there's a violation, they should inform the building inspector for the enforcement, appropriate enforcement act. At least something like one paragraph could be added to the regulations to at least start to, um.
Cover this.
To cover that.
Yeah, and I think that's good, but again, unless DPW comes up with their own procedures, then.
We'll have a meeting next month.
Nobody's filing, um.
But maybe, uh, we could just add that to the regulations, Betsy? Just a section on O and M manuals, even just a paragraph to at least start the, a simplified process.
Betsy.
So the building inspector is the code enforcement officer. You're making a determination here under zoning that the, um, that the infiltration system that they're putting in and that the system that they're putting in is, is adequate because they're at twenty-nine point seven percent of impervious coverage. The building inspect, the reason the language was put in on number four, inspection reports should be sent to the town engineer and the building inspectors. The town engineer looks at the drainage issues and the building inspector is the code enforcement officer. They work together. So there's, as long as you have that language in there and they're doing their jobs, which is what they do on a regular basis, you should be fine.
So my point again just being that I've, I've talked to the building inspector about this before. They, he does not do this. So I, we just have to get it on his radar for him to do it.
We'll have a meeting.
This is not code enforcement, though.
Okay, well, so this gets sent to the building inspector and it can be sent to the building inspector with an email saying, you know, this is a requirement of your job.
So can I just say, wait, can I just, uh, I'm sorry, restate what I think I'm hearing? Which is Betsy's saying that there are the provisions in bylaws and, uh, enforcement mechanism. And there is doubt about whether those, those responsibilities are either understood or followed through on. Is that what I'm hearing? Is Betsy's saying, and we, we're having, so those are two separate things, it seems to me. If, like, let's just for extreme, say that there was, there was no building inspe, the building inspector quit and there was no one in that position, then clearly no one would be there to be the enforcement agent, which is the concern, is, you know, but if, but if the job of the enforcement agent exists, Betsy's saying that is the, that we don't need any regulations, it, it's sufficient, irrespective of a performance evaluation of that person or a sufficient time or other.
Is this, is this a topic we should have?
Oh, right, this is a little out of our, this is not really pertaining to passing this binding.
Right.
This is kinda what's on the agenda. So this, this is time for a separate discussion, but you make a good point. And, uh, so I'd like to move.
I just had some typos and stuff.
Okay.
And unless, if we don't care, I'm fine with it.
Oh, um.
You can get, can you just give the typos to Betsy or put it, leave it on our desk or something? If it's typos.
How many are there?
Well, one, two, three. Two, whatever, four.
Four?
I forgot what came after three. Yeah, so everybody's giving me the evil eye, so just go ahead and do what you want.
Well, I think one of the main thing is.
Well, let's make a motion to, to approve.
Hold on a second. One thing I saw was an increase over fifteen percent. The property's already over fifteen percent, right? It starts paragraph, public hearing?
Yeah, that's correct.
Most of the planning board's concerns were addressed for them to determine that the artificial stormwater drainage system would work with an increase of over fifteen percent. So it was already over fifteen percent.
What difference does that make?
Say increase.
I think the main point is we got our points in that we wanted, you know, and M and, um, I mean, the guys. I, it's, 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 I would like to make a motion to.
Move to approve the, uh, determination from the planning board, uh, under section ten point three point five point one for one seventeen School Street owner Nicole, Nicole A. Day Living Trust to approve as written with the correction of the typos that Mary will leave on Yale's desk or in the planning board mailbox.
No, I, well, I'll, yeah.
Add on a, oh, scan, we'll email it to Betsy.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Road call, Laura?
Yes.
Ms., uh, Ms. Stilberg?
Yes.
So we.
Yes.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes, yes. Okay.
Yes. Okay, this is gonna be quick. Uh, proposed warrant articles, I didn't think there'd be a town meeting in June, but, um, I know Sarah at the last meeting was interested in moving this admin stuff ahead.
Sounds like we have a bigger problem with the site.
Right, so I'm thinking these things, we, there's no rush, really. I, I'd like to pass them, not put this on and move them for discussion later, later on. If we're gonna move to the call, I'd like to start discussing these in June.
That's a very good idea.
Not tonight. Is there any objection to that?
I, I think at the next meeting, we need to have a priority list because I'm really concerned that we're spending all this time, which we already spent some time on these policies, procedures, rules or regulations, and this nitty gritty stuff isn't getting done. We just kinda pile this stuff and we don't have time for this, but nothing's actually getting done really well. And so I didn't see anything in the last meeting. We talked about the floodplain timetable, that's not in here. So, I mean, big ticket items are not getting addressed, so.
Plane bylaw, I thought Mary and Betsy were gonna work on.
Right, and we were gonna have a timeline, what we needed to do to move forward by this meeting. And that's, I don't, that.
So I'm not taking the lead on that.
Betsy was gonna get us this, so I just.
I'm not gonna get that done in June.
No, absolutely not, and that's not what I asked for. I said, how long, what does this timeline take look like? Because we're talking about years at this point of what I wanted. We were supposed to have an outline of what it looked like to get done.
Sure.
And we were supposed to have that today. So I feel as a board, we need to set a priority list because things are just getting piled on. We're saying that we don't have time and the things that we thought were important to us just keep getting pushed down, kick the can, and we're on towards. So the floodplain, we've been screaming about this. It's important for the forty A, MBTA zoning, we need to get that done. We need a timeline and I think.
Agreed.
I guess I'm, so I know, who is taking the lead on the floodplain? I thought Mary was taking the lead with Betsy.
So am I writing the bylaw? I mean, I'm happy to, but I, I, I've gone down this road before where I've written curb cut bylaw or, you know.
We all have. We all done that.
And, you know, which is fine. And then somebody else takes over and they write it and whatever. So if I'm writing the floodplain bylaw, let me know that and I will focus on that. But that has not been the discussion.
Yeah, Betsy was supposed to have what needs to get done, how long it typically takes so we can backtrack and know when to start. That was my understanding at the last meeting.
I provided the planning board with a memo on timeframes for zoning articles. I have spent an inordinate amount of time on trying to address the zoning bylaw and the fact that it's pretty screwed up. And I have not had a chance to get into the floodplain bylaw. If I didn't have all the zoning, other zoning issues, I would be there. So, um.
I feel like you spent a lot of time on these policies and procedures too. So I feel like the planning board needs to figure out what our priorities are, is my point.
Probably not tonight, though.
So we will talk about our priorities on the twenty-second.
Me too.
Put that on the agenda. Another long meeting.
Can we talk about whether we should maybe hash this out next week in a subcommittee meeting? Chris, Mary and I, does, does that sound acceptable?
I'm happy to leave this out, sure.
Other rules and regulations?
Yeah.
Hash what out?
To get maybe through one of these two sections, so the next meeting isn't as painful. That would be great.
That'd be that.
Okay.
So post it.
Mm-hmm.
Zoom it, so.
Correct, yeah.
All right, um.
Well, can we put on the next agenda? I, there's a lot of false information out there on MBTA, um, multifamily housing and what we get from the housing authority and this and that. Can we start pushing some data out to residents that we have? I think we probably should have a link on the town website for MBTA.
There is one.
We do.
There is one.
We have one already and I have a meeting on the fifteenth with Tiffany to go over the town's website, the planning board website.
So can we discuss, can we, next meeting, discuss some of the data points that we know and get those out there? So there's, like, I have the housing authority numbers, I have all that stuff, so there's not all this misinformation floating around.
Sure, if you wanna provide me with the housing authority numbers, I will put them on the website.
Are they current this year? Right from the director?
So, um.
They're small.
So will we have something from the subcommittee, uh, for next meeting also?
Yeah, we're gonna meet next week.
Put that on.
Yeah, yeah. Should we agree now to what articles to concentrate on at the meeting?
So we're gonna talk about the regulations, right? Oh, we get the next.
The regulating, that's what you're talking about, regulations.
Regulations, yeah.
Articles and the regulations.
Yeah.
For the town meeting?
No, rules and regs.
So, yeah, you guys put something up and, uh.
Why don't you make recommendations? I think that there are some.
You'll be on the agenda to report that. So we've got a million, okay, so, all right, um, planners. All right, planners report, I think we've discussed. The Asian groups, I'll just mention that the water resource task board is now gonna push to the select board a rate schedule, a tiered water rate new schedule, so if you're, you use a lot of water, your bill will go down, but if you use water, it's both gonna go way up. This is what they're proposing, so I want to let you know that. I'll I'll post it on our meeting packet once the thing's official. It's in a draft form, which you'll know. And then the CPC, we met on the twenty seventh and just went over the town meeting voting and updates on new projects. Review the master plan. Any of these other committees have a report?
The harbor management plan met and kind of got started. Not not much to report yet.
Coastal zone?
Coastal zone met last week with the consultants and the informational, we presented in a public meeting this Wednesday, May tenth. I believe it's, it's an evening meeting. It's posted on the town website. I believe it's at six, but people should check the time.
For housing, we're meeting on Wednesday also.
Okay. And now the words everyone wants to hear, I'm gonna move on to the adjourned.
So moved.
Objections? Thank you all.
All right, thanks.